Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 24th. It is 5:00 PM and we are here at the George Ron Little Theater for the facilities usage and planning subcommittee meeting. I'd like to establish a quorum first. So, Mr. Homer?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
And I'm here as well as the chair, Ms. Ayers. So, I'm gonna put a motion forward to see if anybody would like to take anything out of order from the consent agenda.
So, I would, um, if you recommend that we take number three, uh, 'cause we have a presenter here, um, and that was my mistake. I should've actually listed it as number one. So, if, um, you would agree to take, uh, number three out of order and take it right away.
Can I get a motion to approve taking number three out of order and making it first?
Uh, motion to take item three and, uh, present that as the first item on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. So moved. So, we will begin with President--
No, they all have to vote.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. Um, can I get a show of hands for who approves, disapproves? Thank you for working with me. Okay, so we'll start with the presentation of the turf fields.
Thank you. So, um, tonight we have Jonathan with us from, uh, I always pronounce this Aviv--
Activitas.
Activitas. And, um, they are the design firm that put together, uh, as you remember, I think it was back in the, um, summer or last spring, we went in front of the city council to discuss the need for turf fields, um, 'cause we only have one in the city that lodges ours. Um, and then the city council actually wanted us to put together, um, a design for the fields, the Polisino fields, which are located behind the AZF rink. Also, um, get a price for the replacement of the current Marciano turf that is now 12 years old and will need to be replaced soon. And then for the, um, four Compass Middle Schools, um, across the city and along with the Davis School as well. So, um, Jonathan and his team have put this together, um, and they're here to present to you before, um, and we'll ask for a vote, allowing us to then take it to the city council, 'cause obviously it has to be funded by the city council, 'cause it's capital projects. Um, and so Jonathan's gonna take us through that, through the presentation and answer any questions you may have. Thank you, Jonathan, for being here.
Thank you. Uh, so once again, my name is Jonathan Charwick from Activitas. We're a landscape architecture and civil engineering firm based out there in Massachusetts. Um, our primary focus work is athletic and recreation design, so similar to, um, your community. We work all over New England, mostly Massachusetts, on similar projects. Uh, so a slay introduction to our firm. So, a short agenda for this evening. Um, so, as was stated earlier, we've been working with, um, the high school for the last few months on the design of Polisino Field. Uh, we've done some surveying and we'll walk through some of the constraints we have out there as it relates to wetland regulations and, uh, the West Meadow Brook that's adjacent to the facility. And then we also have some preliminary designs for, uh, the high school facilities, along with the five middle schools. There was noted earlier. And then, uh, we can open up to any questions or comments as we go through. So, uh, this is an existing conditions plan of Polisino Field. Um, just orient yourself on the far left side is where we are in the high school right now. The rink is just to the lower left of the page in the white. So, as, uh, most of you know, we have West Meadow Brook that's just north on the page. Um, and there's a number of wetland areas around the facility. And that's important to know, because, uh, if the project proceeds, we'll be going in front of Conservation, other, uh, city, um, boards. And, you know, really understanding of constraints are important to see what we can develop for the facility. Um, so as you can see, there's a number of setbacks that are required, uh, from the Conservation Commission. There's a 25-foot riverfront area that's a no-touch area, so essentially we have to stay out of that regardless. Um, and then the 50-foot riverfront area and the 100-foot wetland buffers, those areas we can build within, but it's a regulation that requires us to go in front of the Conservation Commission. So, as it relates to, um, constraints, for the most part, we're making assumptions that all the area that has grass right now can be renovated into turf or other, uh, amenities. And for the most part, we're trying to keep the existing vegetation as it is. So, this is the preliminary design option, um, that was decided, uh, through the, the high school staff. We, we had a few meetings with a number of different concepts, different ways to lay out the facilities. Um, and this layout seemed to, uh, meet most of the program elements as best as possible. So, we'll start on the far right-hand side. Uh, so we have a rectangular field, um, that's in an east-west orientation. It's long enough for football and wide enough for soccer, so we can also play lacrosse and field hockey inside. Um, the nice thing about this orientation is in the lower right corner of that, we have a softball infield. Um, obviously, you know, concerns in the spring, um, in New England, you know, the ground's typically wet early in the season, so getting an area for the softball and baseball team to at least practice, potentially play games is important. Um, in, in this fashion, there's enough space for an actual, uh, full-size high school, um, softball game to be played on the turf. Uh, there's a few concrete pads that we could put some team benches. And then just adjacent to the left field line, there's about 192, uh, seats. So, a few row bleachers for spectating, whether it's for softball or for the rectangular sports. Um, just to the left of those bleachers, you'll see there's a small little, um, concrete pad for discus. That's currently thrown that location now, so it would be still thrown on the, the turf if we proceed with this project. And then, the left side of the field in a north-south orientation, it's a smaller soccer field, uh, that could be more used for practice. Field hockey, lacrosse could get some good practice use. And football as well. We just wouldn't have a full-size football field for that practice space. And then, south of that space, we have a small baseball infield. So, again, you'd be able to use this, um, for practice, for drills earlier in the season. There's some backstop, um, ball nang and fencing behind. So, couldn't get a full-size game, but again, somewhere of practice while we're waiting for the ground to thaw out at the beginning of the spring season. And javelin also would be able to be thrown, uh, on that piece of carpet to the left. And then, as you keep going a little bit left, closer to the high school, there's an existing shot put pad that would be replaced in kind. So, essentially, this is a good practice space for all your sports. All the throwing events for track would still occur down here. Um, it really, it becomes a very utilized space. Uh, we're also able to fit two batting tunnels just to the right of the baseball infield as well. So, those would be overhead batting tunnels with some synthetic turf on the, on the surface as well. Um, the whole synthetic turf field would be all carpet, so we wouldn't be introducing any infield mix or dirt. So, from a maintenance standpoint, it's very simple. You're not dealing with migration of infield mix, which becomes a huge issue on baseball and softball fields when they're adjacent to synthetic turf. And then, if we go all the way to the parking lot, um, one of the things we contemplated earlier on was, you know, the potential to have a proposed building for some restrooms, some storage, and, um, things of that nature. So, when we go through the cost, we have a general placeholder based on a square footage number for the building, but we haven't done any true design. And this would be something, maybe utilities are brought out at some point, and then, you know, based on fundraising or budgetary concerns, you know, the building could be done in the future. But there is a parking, um, a 24-foot wide driveway that gets you to a few handicap parking spaces, so you have handicap accessibility to the facility. And then a little bit of a turnaround that we envision, you know, parents picking up their students at the end of the day or at the end of practices, and they're able to pull out pretty easily. And, um, ba- based on this layout, we, we're looking at lighting the entire, uh, piece of turf. So, you know, the way the lighting systems are set up, you know, if you're just playing a game on the far right side, you could only turn those lights on with having enough light for safety, or you could have the lights on the entire, uh, turf field. So, when we look at the budgetary numbers, lighting for the entire field, along with some site lighting from the parking lot through the facility, is included in the budget. So, looking for the overall budget, this is for Polisino Field only. So, uh, we break this out into a number of different items. Mobilization, site preparation, so preparing the site, um, earthwork to get the, the site prepared for grading and things of that nature. Um, the infilled synthetic turf, utilities, sports laying, athletic equipment, and other site and landscape improvements. Um, construction subtotal is just north of $4 million. Um, at this stage, we'd like to carry a 20% contingency. We're really just doing some initial studies. So, we haven't done any geotech work to really understand if there's other soil considerations. Uh, you know, more detailed design needs to occur, which would take out some of that budget. So, at this point, we're holding a 20% contingency with the goal that after this project did move forward, that would reduce as we develop the project a little bit further. Um, and then we have a placeholder 10% for soft costs, uh, for surveying, geotech, design, and construction administration from design consultants. Um, again, that, that's a good budgetary placeholder. If we were to proceed with design, we would give you a full proposal for the scope of work. And my gut tells me it's below that 10%, but from a budgetary standpoint, if you have to carry other consultants on the city's end as well, that can come out of that budget. So, with all that included, uh, the development of this field is about $5.2 million. Um, we do put at the bottom there three escalation costs. So, assuming this doesn't happen in 2023, we do make some assumptions based on everything going on in the marketplace. There will be some escalation if this comes down the line a little bit. So, you know, right now, we're carrying 5%. So, you can see, you know, if this doesn't occur till about 2026, you see the premium that, um, we might see with these numbers. And again, you know, the way the market is right now, it's a little tough to predict what's gonna happen next week, never mind three months down the road. Um, but a lot of these unit costs we've used are based on conversations we've had with current contractors. So, these are real numbers in the marketplace right now. And, um, you know, these numbers are always budgetary on our end. We'd rather have this budget, and when we go out to bid, the number comes at least a penny lower than what your budget is. We never want to be extremely tight with these numbers and then come back and say, "Oh, well, we missed by 10%." So, we do feel comfortable. It's a good budget number at this stage. Um, as we proceed with design, we would refine these numbers as we're going through the process. Um, and then the last, um, line I am on the bottom, the add for a support building. So, based on the square footage, I think it was a, a 20-by-40 building, give or take, uh, we, we did so, just a flat square footage number with some utilities. So, it's a budget number, you know, 2.5 for a building. And again, that's really a placeholder. We haven't looked at the finishes, what type of building it is. Is it prefabbed? Does it have brick? All that kind of stuff hasn't been done. So, this is really a placeholder saying, if we wanna have some type of support building with, you know, restrooms that require the utilities out to that location, things like that, we could start there. And then, if a feasibility study wanted to occur on the building, we could certainly figure out what that number is a lot more, um, a lot better than what we have right now. And then the last piece is looking at Marciano Stadium. So, again, as we were on-site, um, you know, doing a few site visits, you know, the carpet has reached the point where you really need to consider resurfacing probably in the next year or two. It's gotten you about 12 years or so of use. Gets great use. Um, doesn't look that bad for the age, but, you know, these synthetic turf fields, they get to a certain point in our curve when they hit that year 10, 12, 13, they drop off pretty quick unless you're doing some aggressive maintenance. So, it's about 1.2, we assume, to resurface the carpet. So, removing the carpet and putting a new carpet system down, and then a re, um, a resurfaces of, of the track. So, you're still leaving the surfacing in place and the asphalt. It's really just a touch-up of, of paint on top of that. So, a placeholder of about 1.2, um, again, with 20% for project contingency and 10% for soft costs. And then, as you can see, similar to the previous estimate, a few years out for escalation. Um, at this point, does anyone have any questions on the high school, or do we want me to proceed through the middle school and then open up to questions or comments at that point?
This includes, I didn't mind my mistake, but it includes the track, I'm sure.
Yes, the, the 1.2 is the track and the field, correct. All right. Let me proceed. I'll go through the middle school sites, and then, um, we can open it up, uh, to questions, comments after that. So, um, as the superintendent noted, uh, we've looked at, uh, the four, uh, north, south, east, west, and, uh, Davis-K. And what we primarily, we're looking at, how, how much utility could we get out of a facility on these fields, um, primarily looking at football and soccer. Again, longest field being football, soccer, the widest. We can generally get everything else in here. So, for Davis-K, uh, looking in that backfield area, uh, full-size field for all the rectangular sports, and then potentially renovating, uh, the tennis courts into two basketball courts you see on the right-hand side. Um, and that, uh, preliminary cost is just under $2 million. I think it's 1.98. And again, these numbers for the middle school, same thing where we are carrying a 20% contingency and a 10% for the soft costs as well. Looking at North Middle School, um, in order to utilize this, uh, still keeping softball and baseball in their general locations and, and putting synthetic turf down there. And then, opening up the synthetic turf footprint again, so we could get field hockey, uh, I'm sorry, football and soccer in the outfield. Nice thing about this configuration, we have full-size baseball and softball, so you can play both those fields at the, both those games at the same time. And then, generally, one rectangular sport in the outfield, uh, when you're using it for that. And that number is right around $3 million, if my eyes are telling me the right thing. South Middle School, odd configuration. It's a large rectangle. It's really tough to get a, a full-size field in its current configuration. So, what we did here was looked at an east-west orientation. So, you have a full-size rectangular field to the right, and then renovating the existing basketball courts, I believe the old tennis courts, to still get you two basketball courts and match what you have right now. And that's around 1.8, I believe. East Middle School, um, maintain what they have right now for softball and baseball, with a rectangular field in the middle, uh, so similar to what we saw at North. That was around 2.4. Uh, one thing to note, there is a desire to look at track facilities at these middle schools as well. So, on east and on north, those are the two facilities that have the most space. So, we are gonna take another look following this meeting to see what we can do for a track and, and field around these fields. So, you know, in, in this instance, this may just be a track and field facility. Baseball and softball may not work with a track around it, but that'll be something to consider away if the priority is track versus baseball and softball. And the last facility, West Middle School, um, so we're still maintaining the softball field in the left field area, uh, down in the right, baseball. And again, we're getting a full-size football and soccer field, along with the lacrosse's and field hockey mill. And we're just around 2.5 on that facility. So, last piece of this, just looking at this, uh, in a vacuum. So, uh, the Brockton High School facilities, looking at if, if you did the stadium, the support building, and the field, we're around 8.9. And you see, obviously, those numbers could get broken out depending on if you want to do one versus the three. Um, and then with the five middle school facilities all in, around 11.6. And that puts us at about $20 million for all of the projects if we assume them all at the same time. Um, once again, as I know, we have the contingencies and the soft costs in those. And I do know on the $20 million, so again, we're assuming you're not gonna do all these facilities at the same time. The, that $20 million is 2023 costs. So, we went through and said, "Okay, over 10 years, we're gonna try to do these facilities." That $20 million will go up a little bit, because we'll have to add the escalation like we showed on the first two slides. But as of right now, you know, 2023 costs, all those facilities around $20 million, and then we go up a little bit from there. So, that completes the presentation on my end. So, more than happy to answer any questions or comments from the committee. I'll just go to the first slide.
Does anybody have any questions? I actually do have a question.
Sure.
So, the 20% contingency on the fields, um, I understand if it, you know, I understand that if it was because of us, if, you know, we decided to stretch it over time, but say we said to you today, "We have the $20 million, and we want you to build all of these, but it takes you three years to get all of this built." Will we charge the 2023 price, or are we gonna be charged the later price, even though we are not at fault for the time lag?
Sure. Yeah. So, if, let's say for argument's sake, you know, a week from now, you called and said, "We're gonna go on ahead with all the facilities." So, we would develop a proposal for that design work. So, because we're only, we're only the designers. We don't do any of the construction. Um, and again, we're, we're holding 10%. That number's probably a good budget number, but again, you may have other, um, design consultants you wanna add on. So, we give you a proposal for whatever dollar amount it is. We would design the facilities. We would go out to public bid, and then the contractor's bidding on the project would give us that pricing. And, um, you know, depending on, you know, there is a little bit of economy of scale. So, let's say you wanna do everything at the high school at the same time. So, Marciano and Polisino Field, one contract. There's some economy, 'cause they're bringing all their equipment. It may be a little less expensive than, let's say, you have two contractors do both of them. It's gonna be a little more expensive, 'cause they're mobilizing separately, and there's some additional costs there. So, um, the design fees are pretty straightforward when we do those proposals to figure out what that number is. Um, but the, the bidding climate is really gonna dictate what those numbers are.
Thank you. And one last question, um, only because I remember another project, and no one had anticipated the Conservation Commission.
Yep.
So, talk to me a little bit about that. I mean, they are wetlands. Like, what, you know, that, is this something that we could say, "Yes, let's go," and then all of a sudden we find sand dollar turtles or something that we have to pres- like, you never know what can happen.
Yep. So, we've already talked a little bit with the conservation agent about the project. So, we shared the survey with her when we got that survey, and we identified all the wetlands. So, she agreed with what was being dictated as wetlands versus, there's a lot of detention basins out there. So, the detention basins were built when the rink and other things were done, even though there, there's potentially wetland plants in there. They're, they're officially detention basins. So, she agreed with our assessment there. Um, so I think if the, the next step would be to start proceeding with design, we'd probably meet with her and the city a little bit more to look at the logistics of, um, you know, what, what things she would be concerned with. The co- and I said, you know, the conservation, I think city engineering would want to take a look at this a little bit further. Conservation didn't have a huge concern right off the bat, um, but we would have to have some further conversations, get a little more into the detailed design. One of their concerns was, um, walkways in that 25-foot, uh, no disturbance along the wet, uh, about, around the brook. That's why we put a lot of the pavement on the other side. So, we've tried doing a few things early on, but I think our next step would be to sit down with them in person with the plans, go through what we're proposing to see if there's any hurdles or specific items that they want us to alter early on in the process.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, the next step for, um, this committee would be just to, um, approve, um, allowing me to go to the mayor with this current presentation, so he could bring it forward to the city council for their decision on what they can fund at this time. So, then Jonathan would go to, he would do the same presentation for the mayor, um, and then the mayor would then get a city councilor to support it. I think, um, we have both Mark DiAgostino and Jeff Thompson that are in support. Um, and then they would, obviously, debate it at the city council for how much to fund, uh, fund it all, uh, do it over a period of time, uh, you know. So, this actually request came directly from the city council when we were there. Um, you know, I wanna say it was in the spring last year. Um, yeah, I think right around June, we were there, and they requested this full evaluation. Um, you know, they told us to make sure we brought back the Cadillac version, which we've had them do. And, um, now it's, the only, we, all we can do is request that the mayor puts it in front of them, because they're, because it's capital repair, capital pro- and infrastructure, um, it's the council that has to fund it. So, I would just need a vote to allow me to make the request of the mayor to then have a city councilor support a resolve to bring this back to the council.
Can we get a motion to move forward? Do you have a question, Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, um, I'll put that forward. Can you just touch on, on the difference in the pricing with, uh, adding the tracks to east, what, was it east?
And north.
North and, uh--
East, right?
East, north, and the Davis, I believe--
Davis.
That we had discussed, um, prior, you know, what would be the difference in adding, um, the track to, to those surfaces? And then also, can you just touch a little bit, uh, so the rest of the committee, I mean, I know I've done a lot of research on this, um, about the padding--
Sure.
--so they could know exactly how the padding, what the cost and the years.
Sure. Yeah. So, so with the track work, uh, we met yesterday, so we, we need to dive into that a little bit. So, I think if we do a track in lieu of the synthetic turf fields at those locations, it'll probably go up in cost a little bit. I'm not sure what that number is yet. Um, but our goal is after this meeting to start looking at that layout and, um, seeing. So, for instance, I'll, I'll go to that last slide again, just to see. Yeah. So, you know, if we're looking at North Middle, that's, that's around 3 million, you know, with the track. It's probably 3 to 3 and 1/2. And again, I'm basing this on just other track and fields we've done recently. And then, um, Davis, again, you know, it's, it's probably about half million to a million premium to do the track. So, you know, some of those facilities, so North Middle, the, the synthetic turf footprint will get a lot smaller, but the track usually, we say it's about a half to a million dollars for a track by itself. So, that's why it's probably about a half million premium plus or minus on this. But we'll, we'll make sure that we, you know, we're gonna do some design, get some hard numbers, so that we're not guestimating on that.
And what we do is, actually, when we went to the council, we would take out the, um, the support building.
Yep.
We'd actually figure out how to do that separately from these projects, 'cause we have people that can do that in-house. So, we would probably take that. So, Jonathan, for, when you add the tracks in, you could take that out, actually.
Yep. Perfect. Okay.
You can leave it on the design. You don't have to take it out--
Sure.
--'cause then we would say, "That's something we would do in-house."
Yeah. The rest of what happened here. Yep. Okay. Yeah, one sec.
Yeah, because it's just, we do, like, we have masons that build block buildings. They, they build them. And then our carpenters and plumbers and electricians would do all the work inside.
I think I was more concerned about the restrooms, making sure we--
Oh, yeah.
--have restrooms. So--
That's, that's what this building would be.
Yeah.
Would be restrooms and some stor-, uh, large storage space for those fields out there as well. So, you know, it just would be a lot cheaper for us to do that in-house, and it also brings the cost out. If you're gonna now, might level it out more, but it might be a little cheaper. Um, you add the track in, and if it's, the tracks end up costing 2 and 1/2 million, so that equals the amount of, so we wouldn't be going to them for a building. That would be pulled out.
Yeah, I think I'd rather spend the, this is just me, spend the money on the actual fields and not on the stuff that we can handle on our own. Agreed.
Yeah. And then, let me touch on the, the turf system a little bit. So, um, what you have out there now, um, at Marciano, essentially you have a, a carpet system with green fibers, and then it's infilled with sand and rubber. So, you know, let's say the fibers are probably about 2 and 1/4, 2 and 1/2 inches, and then that infill, when it was first installed, it, it leaves about a half inch revealed of the carpet. And that sand and rubber is what's giving you shock attenuation, essentially, safety for your athletes. So, when, you know, the football team, so when, when an athlete falls on the ground, their impact is in that sand rubber. That's what's cushioning the surface, uh, from a safety standpoint. Um, what we've included in our pricing, what we've done on a number of facilities, is add a pad underneath. So, essentially, you have a stone base under the field. You put the pad down, and then we put the carpet system on top. And what this does, this adds an extra layer of protection for your student athletes as it relates to shock attenuation, concussions, which is just a huge concern in, in athletics right now. Um, essentially, what happens is the height of that sand and rubber infill can decrease a little bit in the carpet, but all your shock attenuation is happening in this pad. Um, a lot of facilities in, in New England have these. A lot of high schools, most of the projects we do, we do it with the pad if budget allows. So, it is included in the budget for all these facilities right now. Um, and we do think it's a, it's a huge benefit. The nice thing as well is with the new turf fields and the infill, you're using less material on top of this. And usually, if you're gonna replace this every 10, 12, 13 years, what have you, you're replacing the carpet and the infill, but your pad can stay for about 25 years. So, you're potentially resurfacing this at least two more times after that initial install. It's a little less expensive, 'cause this system's a little bit smaller, but you have this for extra protection from a budgetary standpoint. Um, so, we're, we're hu- huge advocates of pads. That is included in the pricing right now, and I think it's a huge benefit for the project. And, and the athletic director feels strongly about trying to include in all the projects if we have the budget to support it.
That sounds great. Mr. Homer, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, sorry. There was, um, at one point in the presentation, I think you talked about lighting--
Yep.
--um, is that also part of the projects for the middle school as well?
No. Uh, the, good question. So, Polisino Field is the only one that we've looked at having lights. All the middle schools, we may just put some conduit in place, so you have the potential in future. But right now, none of that pricing reflects any lights at the middle schools.
In that, um, Mr. Homer, we're, um, something, so we'd run, while the ground's open, we'd run all the conduit and maybe do, um, pads for possible lights. But I think it's a lot cheaper for us to do it through, um, you know, just through us, because we get huge, um, rebates for LED. Uh, that's how we replaced the, the lights at Marciano. That's how we did the lights inside the pool here at the high school. Um, so, switching over to the LEDs actually saves us. We get a huge re, the school systems get a big rebate for that.
Just to piggyback, they're all gonna be lit up. It doesn't make sense to just have the turf fields without having lights. So, we definitely get it.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to move forward?
Uh, so we need a motion for--
Motion to allow--
To allow--
Me to take, you know, have, take the presentation to the mayor, um, to, and, uh, to forward it to, for a resolve back in front of the city council.
Sure. Then I'd like to make a motion so stated.
Second.
So moved. Thank you.
Oh.
Oh, wait. Can I get a hands, um, roll call? Okay, we got everybody. Anybody doesn't want it? Denied? Very good. Okay, thank you. So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll reach out for that, uh, to schedule that meeting we discussed, uh, with the mayor.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're back. Thank you for allowing us to take that out of order. Um, so we're back up to, uh, number one, which is an update for the MSBA, uh, and the accepted, um, us into the feasibility stage of, um, for Brockton High School, for the core program and Dr. Cobb's. It's gonna give you an update on-- And Dr. Cobb is going to give you an update on what the MSBA sent us, that things that we'll need to do before the deadlines, and he's going to give you a timeline of the project and what has to be done, certain amount of time to get ready, to get the city council to vote for, we have to vote, we'll have to take an official vote to move into the feasibility stage and then goes to the city council, just almost like how we apply for the SOI. So Dr. Cobb is going to give us an update.
Good evening, everybody. As Superintendent Thomas said, so we're, we've successfully made it through the SOI stage, the statement of interest stage, and we've been invited to participate. So the next stage is the eligibility stage, and then once, once that is completed, we go into the feasibility stage. But there's, as you can see, I gave you this handout with the, with the deliverables, it's with all the timetable. There's quite a few hurdles to jump before we get to the, when we complete the eligibility stage. And the, the second attachment that I gave you is what the, the next step is, is initial compliance certification. And if you had a chance to peruse it, there's quite a bit of, uh, things that the mayor and the school chair, committee chair and the mayor has to sign twice as, as, as the city CEO and the school committee chair. So as it would make so, we're, we've passed the first stage after our third try. And so the next stage is the feasibility, I mean, sorry, the eligibility stage. It, it opens on March 1st and it concludes on November 27th. So we have, you know, 275 days, I believe it is, to complete the eligibility stage. But, you know, like, I gave you these handouts and we're starting to work on this, this part of the eligibility because as you can see with, just for that certificate of, you know, compliance, it's quite a bit. So, but we, we actually can't submit anything before March 1st. So the next, we'll be hearing from the MSBA on February 15th and they'll, they'll open this up for us to be able to submit the, you know, the first compliance certificate. So that's kind of where we are now, and again, I gave you copies to, to peruse at your own, it's, it's quite a bit. I kind of looked through it, but if you have any questions on that part, I'll, I'll, uh.
Also, um, I have a call into the MSBA for, because they allow so much money for athletics, like a complex, uh, playing field, so if a call into them, because there is a chance that, um, everything that in, that we do at the high school would be 80% reimbursed, so.
Oh, gotcha, because it's part of the high school, gotcha.
That could be, because if you look at other new schools, I mean, I was at Plymouth North last year for my daughter, had a tennis match there and I looked, rode around and I think they had up to five turf fields that were done as part of their new school project, so.
And it all fell under the high school project?
Correct.
Gotcha.
And that would be huge cost savings, I mean.
Absolutely.
I've already.
That would pull about.
Be my demands.
About five million dollars.
Adding a few more.
Yeah.
That would, that'd pull about five million dollars off the price, this price here.
Seems like opportunity.
High school's expensive. I, I, I have a call into them because they, they actually do absolutely reimburse fields. And when they redo a new school or renovated, they. No, they won't do pool. They do fields. Yep.
Dr. Cobb's for the initial compliance certification. You, I want to just make sure I understand, you said they don't open it up until February 15th? So it's not even like you, we can start prepping for that in advance, right?
Right, that's what, but the point is sending us out to everybody now so we can start reviewing what the requirements are because you can see there's quite a bit for the mayor and the superintendent to, to look through. But they'll send us an email on February 15th saying that, you know, March 1st, you're, you know, your eligibility period opens and then you can submit it at that point. So we, we cannot submit anything until March 1st.
Do we have to vote on this? Do we have to vote on this?
No.
Does anybody have any other que, Mr. Rodriguez?
On the, uh, school building committee, is that being dictated to the facility subcommittee? Or do we, did we actually create, because I.
It's got to be created.
Yeah, we have to create a team of community stakeholders, yeah.
Is that from the initial meeting where, you know, city council fired, okay.
Yeah, it'd be school committee members, city council, that, somebody, Dr. Cobb, it would be.
It's a, it's a big.
From the building department, it's a pretty big committee.
It gets unwieldy at times, but it, it'll be a big committee.
Now, when it comes to naming the, I mean, obviously they have some type of, you know, uh, list of who sits on this, like, how, how is that created? Is that something that the committee, they would, or just the mayor?
But it has to have so many members from each body.
Yeah, they'll, they'll give us guidance again, once, once we get to that next stage, we'll.
Because this committee has to vote on, um, approval of all the bills. So it was usually comes from, it's always, I remember, at least two members from the school committee, two members from the city council, the, the building department, like Jim Plouffe, procurement officer, I believe. A citizen, yeah, has to be on there. This, for this project, there might be two. So we'll have to have that discussion with, what we'll do is we'll put it on the agenda for another meeting before so we clear on exactly what has to be appointed.
I vaguely remember when, um, we met here with that MSBA, they did mention, I think it was just two school committee members.
Yeah.
And then there was, um, I thought they gave us a list, um.
They might have one, Jim can check with them.
I'll check on.
I just remember from the committees, when I was operations, we used to have these meetings for the, when we did all the window, Shirley was on one of them with us and.
I believe on the 15th of February, that's when they'll send us all that.
Yeah.
More additional requirements.
So my question is, is where, um, it's not open till February 15th, but then there's a deadline of March 31st. Does the committee need to meet before then?
We'll have to have a vote.
Yeah, that's, that's just, March 31st is just for this compliance certification, so.
So do, is it something that we should pick a date tonight?
I don't think so, we have to pick a date tonight, but we just want to find out from them because what's going to have to happen is you'll have to take an official vote as a committee with the language the MSBA makes you use, then it goes to city council. I think it's the vote to enter into feasibility, right?
You have to, right, you have to, the city council has to make a vote saying that they wish to proceed with this.
Well, it comes here, it's, it's got to be two votes, one from the school committee, one from the.
Exactly, and the city council, and then at the time you agree to do a feasibility study, also the funds for it, which in the past have been a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand, this is going to be a little over a million or more.
This will be about 2 million.
And the feasibility study, so.
So it has to go through the whole funding and finance.
Okay. No, I just, I wasn't sure, just to set some dates aside, that's all, um, where we, you know.
Yeah, we'll have it set.
For another school committee meeting or the facilities need to be.
It'll be facilities, then the, the same night of the school, a full school committee meeting, so we can do it all in one night. And then usually the city council will suspend the rules for us and do it all in one night there as well, like they've done with other MSBA projects.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Is that feasibility study reimbursed, do we get reimbursed on that or is that?
Yeah, everything's 80%.
Provided we go through a process.
Yeah, it all gets reimbursed, 80%, yep.
It's actually what, 78%? I was going to say that this was on a $500,000 project.
Oh, no, it's huge, yeah, it's 78.7 or something.
It's different every year, they, they run the numbers on the city's financial ability and come up with a ratio.
Yeah.
It's about around 78%. Like is that on a $300,000 project, not a big number, on a $500,000?
Any other questions? Move on?
Uh, okay, next, Aldo has an update on the proposed new bus depot and the work that the city has been doing and where we are with that.
Yes, we've been looking at many different sites all around the city and speaking with the various owners, Dr. Cobb, myself, Mike, Ken Thompson, we've all gone out to these locations. So we've been, um, working with Millennium Motors, which is down on Main Street, heading towards Kmart. They have a 3.9 acre site. Most of the site is being used for their auto business, some of it is just vacant land to the side, but the overall site is almost four acres. We, um, are looking at what we're allowed to do on a friendly taking, which is 125% of assessed value or appraised value, so we had an appraisal done on the property. And with the 125% of the appraised value and the equipment that's in the building, everything from the office chairs and desks to the car lifts, the compressors, the paint spray boots, all the equipment, we've agreed on a $4.8 million price. The law office put together an MOU that their attorney right now is looking at. If they sign the MOU and the mayor signs the MOU, then they'll begin the process of a friendly taking, which will be, you know, the MOU might be three or four pages, the friendly taking probably, you know, 35 pages. They'll go through and list out everything that we expect in, in the process and what will happen with the property. That then will be presented to the city council. And we'll be asking the city council for those funds to procure not only the property, but also some money to do some work in the property, where the buses will park. Right now is kind of dirt and gravel and I'm talking with the DPW because they may require us to pave it. So I'm asking for those extra funds in that. And at the same time, I'm also going to ask them for the funds to cover new vehicles for the maintenance department, not only for buses, but also for all of our vehicles. Most of our vehicles have over 100,000 miles on them. You know, we're constantly fixing the vehicles and whatnot. So if we're going to ask for the money for that purchase of that property, I'm also going to ask for those vehicles and the site upgrades. The owner is willing to sell it to us for that price, which is a good price, and the mayor is happy with it, as is the law office, so it'll be up to the city council at that point. If, um, if they fund us, we can hopefully make that happen by about April or so, giving us a month or two to get in there and get it prepared so that we can then leave the Brockton Fairgrounds and move into that location. Because you imagine we have to bring internet wire to that site, which would probably pull from, probably South Junior High, so we have to run cable up there from there. We then have to get our phone lines, get the officers, there are officers in there, but get them built out to our needs and basically get the city all up, get the building all up and running and then go through the shop. Right now it's primarily set up for automobiles because they're an automobile dealership, but we'll go through with our people and we'll change some of the lifts so we could put bus lifts in there. But the shop is the shop, the, um, the, you know, the tools, the air compressor, we'll have that all set up. Hopefully by, you know, July 1st, we're up and running if everything goes smooth.
Because we have to give a notice to the current lease.
Yes.
At the fairgrounds by 60 days out?
60 days, I'm pretty sure that, that has on there, so. He's very cooperative, he understands that we've been looking and knows that we'll be leaving, so.
How, how much square footage is in that building?
There's two buildings, I believe.
There's two, the building.
Two or three.
There's, I think, there's one in the back.
20, I think it's 28,000 is what the appraisal. The main building is 25,590, and the second building is 15,200 square feet of storage and a 4,000 square foot metal building on there, so.
So this, the, those buildings, aside from the bus depot, have storage capacity for us as well, not just serving.
Yeah, because you got to have all the, the equipment, because we would also, you'd also fix all, everything would be fixed there, the police cars, the facilities cars, all those, everything would be fixed out of there.
There's also a smaller, third, smaller, third building that's smaller in the back, we could, we could use for storage and, you know.
Yes, and they also, the, the, what we want to do is one of the buildings is going to be used as we're going to move outside grounds out of the high school where they are now because they take up a good amount of, um, the athletic building and we would move them out of there, give that back to the athletics department.
That's what I was saying, I was wondering.
Them operate out of this new location.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping is that it could open up other opportunities for storage and to shift some of the tight space around. Plus, just understanding the drivers, like, I happen to be part of the driver's negotiation and I know that there was a few things, requests that they had asked about eventually getting into a nice building. And so that's why I asked about the square footage, but it's, it sounds great.
It's, the building is a great size, what we're trying to work out right now is enough square footage for, on the parking lot for all the buses, some of the facilities vehicles and all the staff that park. You're looking at, you know, 130 drivers, it's 130 cars.
Additional cars, yeah.
That part we still have to work out, but we at least have something to work off of. And we are storing school supplies and whatnot right now at a outside warehouse that we'd like to get out of. And as we said, come in there for storage, if we have enough room, maybe put a small space building, put stuff in. But at least it's four acres, it gives us something to start with. So that's progressing and hopefully within a couple of weeks, the mayor will send that to the city council, so.
Great, any ques, oh, Ms. Isaac?
So Aldo, quick question, so out of the 3.9 acres, how much of that, has anyone looked into to see? Can we use the 3.9 or is there, you know, is, is conservation, wetland, is there anything back there? Because a lot of those lots along that side of the street go, they're pretty much identical, they go really far back. I'm just curious to see, like, out of the 3.9, seeing some of those metal buildings really will help with storage. I mean, we do have a lot of storage containers all over the city.
Yes.
At different locations and it makes more sense to, if we're going to invest this kind of money, if the city's going to do this, have a location that we can build up, similar to other buildings we've looked at where your storage, if you go high up with some of these metal buildings, it makes more sense. But I'd be curious to see the appraisal, out of the 3.9, if they showed, usually they measure.
Yeah, it's been measured by the city, so where they currently are now is in compliance with the wetlands.
Yes, the Salisbury River is back there.
It is, that's what I figured, so we're going to need parking and if we have room to add some metal buildings, I think that would just be a win-win overall for other departments as well as the transportation.
Absolutely.
So, um, no, definitely, that's a, that's a great location.
I just wish, I mean, that's pretty much, we've been looked everywhere and they're the only ones that actually were willing to do friendly taking.
But actually moved on it.
Two other locations on that side of the city. We also looked back at the location up here at the Farm America and there's absolutely no playing ball there. And the price is very high and.
Location on, on West Chestnut, very high price.
Yeah.
And some of the locations, because I know I'm always looking, um, being on the facilities subcommittee, so you run into either the building's perfect and no land or, you know, you can't use really what's out there. So it's really tough, so given that side of the, given that side of the city of Brockton, you're over, you know, closer to the West Bridgewater area, but it's also, you know, you can access other schools quickly.
And our point to the city was, we're running out of time here. I mean, we cannot go back and spend what we're spending on leasing.
Yeah.
A property because we're, first of all, it's too much money. Second of all, this move will actually save at least 150 to 200,000. And like you said, with the option of putting other things there where we could, you know, stop leasing other buildings and, and make it.
Right, and this location doesn't really affect the residents, if you think about it, you know, you basically.
And there's also other options, once we get there, there's other options for this open land around there that we could.
Because I know we have the repair shop here, I know we looked into that when I first came on the committee. So again, having, and I believe the lifts and a lot of the equipment is fairly new.
Yes, it is.
So which helps, the only thing is, is if there's any, um, just curious, you know, the age of, like, obviously the city and, and everyone's looked into this, but just age of the roof, age of the, like.
No, they actually, no.
Everything's been updated?
No, before there's any taking, you have to have fire, building department.
Arranging all that right now.
You have to all go in hazardous waste that all has to pass before any papers are passed.
Make sure, no, thank you.
Yeah, you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Just, I mean, I'd share the same concerns as far as conservation. Three point, I'm not a mathematician, but three point acres for 100-plus buses and staff, that, that's not going to fit. So I, that's one of my concerns where you're going to put the staff. And then also, um, I, it, I mean, I would like to see an actual plot plan in the design of how our, our buses are going to be parked and also to include the staffing because you just don't lay out a, um, a slab of concrete or whatever to build a parking lot because you also have to put drainage, we have to have lighting, and what's the cost of that? Because that's not, you know, $100,000 just to do that as well.
Right.
So I, you know, if we, if I could get a, a plot plan to actually see the diagram, how it's going to be later. Uh, so, I, you know, if we, if I could get a, a plot plan to actually see the diagram, how it's gonna be laid out, you know, just cause you have three, you know, three point eight acres, you're not gonna fit, you know, what do we have? A hundred and thirty-five, thirty-seven buses, if I'm not mistaken, a little bit more?
A hundred and thirty-five.
And then you figure another hundred plus staff and.
Yep.
Facilities, I just wanna make sure that this is gonna act, this is a plus, you know, I'm not.
Right.
Against this, because, you know, we, we're running out of, you know, spots, I mean, uh, but I would like to see like a configuration of how many buses, can our buses fit there? And then on top of that, you know, to build a parking lot, they're not gonna just say, you know, pour a slab there, but we have to have drainage and lighting and security, fencing, um, like a total cost outward, it's gonna be.
And that's gonna be part of the bond they pulled for this whole thing.
Right. Let me ask for the, let me ask for the funds. Okay.
So, the way this works, as far as every, the city has to purchase the property, and, cause we can't. Um, and then they basically give it back to us, like they do with this current buildings now. So, it's obviously the city owns them all, and then we're the occupants who take care of them. Um, so, they have to purchase it. So, I know Aldo's working with Troy on the bond that has to include lighting, fencing, pavement, everything that needs to happen for.
So, our next step's basically all of that happening, or all of those questions answered for the mayor, and then the mayor brings it up to city council?
Exactly.
So, when you go to city council, is in that packet of information, would you have, to Mr. Rodriguez's point, would we have a plot plan, would we have all of that put together at that time to be presented at city council?
Yes.
Yeah, you'd have, you would see it all before it goes to city council.
Okay, good.
Cause you have to see the, all the, the plot payload, and you have to see what they said, what the fire department said, with the hazardous waste, you have to bring a company in to investigate it for hazardous waste. Uh, there has to be clear guidelines of what the owner has to take with them, and what's they're responsible for cleaning it up. We all know that old daily ships could hold tanks in the ground that have to come out, that's all the responsibility of the owner.
Yeah.
So, the timeline is the best case scenario, I just, I hope it goes well, because we're.
Running out of time.
Out of opportunities.
How, how quick can we get that plot plan with the design? That's, we're doing it right now in-house, um, using Google Earth. Um, and I've got a company lined up who's gonna go in and review the building, um, like Mike said, all the, the waste, the, um, the condition of the building, the condition of the roof, I've got them, uh, they gave me their proposal yesterday. So, we'll get them right off on the project. And then it comes down to, I'm talking to DPW about the actual runoff, the parking lot, and the, and the river back there. So, I'm talking to Pat Hill.
Yes, we'll have to get, but we'll have to use the, a firm to give us a blueprint.
So, now I gotta find a new location and get my sticker for my vehicle.
Oh, my God, is that where you go?
So, um, I was just through a blank, um, so, the twenty-one E, the, the, the environmental test.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, those usually take some time.
The current owner has one.
He has one, cause I was gonna say, they've been there, but not like a long, long time, not like twenty years.
He has pretty much recent, up-to-date paperwork. The only thing that happens now is that the company that the city is bringing in to evaluate it, with the fire department, will have to review all his.
Yes.
Paper. He has his updated paperwork for compliance, um, but it all has to be verified.
Right, it says there's no tanks in the ground, it says they got twenty-one clearance, but now they'll verify everything.
Yeah, so you go in and, nobody's better to verify all that stuff than Deputy Chief Williams. He'll base, he'll make sure he goes through that place.
Make sure.
Very thoroughly.
Well, the good thing is, is I don't, I don't believe they've been there for a long, long time, so, a lot of their.
I think it passed papers in ten, two thousand ten, maybe?
I was gonna say, maybe ten, so probably about fourteen years.
Two thousand eleven, they think they passed papers and took that place over, and it said.
So, that's a good thing, as far as like the sprinklers and, and things like that for the fire department, so. So, they will do all that before this is committed and this is brought to city.
Yeah, cause we have to make sure we're able to go, cause you're gonna have, the exhaust system has to be evaluated, cause you know, you have to hook up that hose to the exhaust when you're fixing vehicles inside, so, all that has to be in compliance, um.
Cause I vaguely remember a body shop all the way in the back.
Yes.
There's a body shop, um.
Yes, I've got.
Yeah.
A letter from Environmental Consulting, they were there, uh, January twenty-fifth last year at this time. Gave them their, same thing with the plot plans, um, the delineation, so.
That's all.
They've had all their work done, um.
No, it's, to Mr. Rodriguez's point, by looking at where we currently are housing the buses, you can get a visual as to how much space we need. Again, they're not designated parking spaces, they're just parking them neatly, whereas.
That's exactly what we're doing with Google Earth.
Yeah, so you're just.
Have to line up.
Yes.
Just to make sure we're so many, I don't know offhand how far you have to be from, um, conservation or wetlands and things like that. I want to say, is it a hundred, hundred and fifty feet? I could be wrong, I haven't had to work on that in a while.
Right now, he currently does have the setback.
That's already delineated, that's already done.
It's already in there, so we know when you're.
The tree line is, is that, that hundred foot?
You have to be so much back, he already is, he's in compliance with that. We just have to make sure any additional work, we have to be in compliance for.
Perfect, again, it's.
And the issue with the, we're in, we're in either bigger need to leave where we currently are, because the, and we don't pay for them, I don't think, the buildings for office space, that wasn't, was that part of the lease, or just the property?
It's a, still a all property.
Yeah, and they let us use the buildings?
Use the buildings, yes.
Yeah, the buildings, we cannot be in anymore, because there's a severe rodent issue. So, we had to lease two trailers, um, to get employees out of that environment. Um, so even more so, um, our current location is just, it's been okay to get the place, uh, bus company up and running, but it's just not working, it's just a tou- we're in a tough spot there now.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I just wanna make sure that, like, with the, you know, four point eight million, is the price included into constructing and expanding the parking? Or is that an added cost that the s- the school department is gonna, or that's already taken care of on the city side?
The four point eight million is, is the land, the building and the equipment. I factored another seven hundred and fifty thousand for some of the work that's needed. So, but after talking to Pat Hill, um, last Wednesday, um, he's saying we might need a water filtration system for the runoff. So, um, my original plan was not to pave the, the, the area with the gravel. He said we may have to, so we're working on that piece right now, and if so, we'll just increase that number, saying that aside from buying the building, we will need one point one million for the site improvements.
It's gotta come, the city has to.
So, city side?
Yes, all that, it has to be city, it's all capital costs.
Okay.
And either way, the whole busing is all city side anyways.
Yeah, that comes from the non-net.
That's all non-net spending, exactly.
I just, two quick questions.
Because he's right, you, Mr. Rodriguez, you're right, we, when we go in there, it's gotta.
Yeah.
We gotta make sure we, there's enough money there to do everything we need to do.
I would say we like, we wanna get, I mean, if we get in there next week, it'll be great, but, I mean.
No, we got, no, there's a lot of stuff to get done.
There's a lot of, you know, a lot of work.
Yeah, I don't see us even getting ready to move over there until, probably in three or four weeks before this next school year starts.
Yes.
Like, our best case would be moving over there in August, to have everything done.
Yeah, with all said and done.
Yeah.
Um, so, Ms., Aldo, um, there's gravel in the back, or is it grass?
It's a combination, it's like gravel, but then all the weeds that you're growing through it.
Exactly.
So, given the winter months and stuff, we definitely have to put some kind of pavement down.
Oh, yeah.
Just so.
I think they ha- I, I think, according to Pat, uh, obviously, there's gotta be a study done, but I don't think the gravel passes the test anymore for, because there's a runoff into the conservation and the brook back there.
Right.
You, I, I don't think you're allowed the gravel anymore, cause it's something with the runoffs and the.
Okay.
That's exactly what he said, he doesn't, he said the gravel.
He doesn't think you can keep gravel and sand, he thinks you have to pave it.
Okay, and my other question is, is what are we, offhand, I'm not remembering, is it five hundred thousand that we're paying? Where we currently are, right now?
Five seventy-five.
Five seventy-five, so, for those that are watching, we're, we're renting that for five seventy-five, where we own this.
Exactly.
And, um.
Much lesser bond payment.
Much lesser, and we will own it, um, so that's why I'm always in favor of purchasing.
Oh, yeah.
If the numbers work and everything works, because.
Plus, it's a city asset.
Mm-hmm.
With left for paying less money, and it's five seventy-five now.
Right, I think there's a three percent escalation for.
Three percent escalator going forward to the next year, so it's, next year goes up over six hundred thousand.
And they're also looking to develop their property, and they may.
They could evict us within sixty days.
Yes.
So, we need a little bit of security as far as a permanent location.
Exactly.
Perfect.
And you know, we've been work, looking for a while.
Oh, we've, I, I, I'm always looking when I'm driving. I'm always, superintendent, so we're always looking for, for properties, um, that we can work with. And it's really tough to find one that has the land and the buildings, um, and the location.
That's set up to actually repair things, too.
Yeah, and the location, again, where you're not gonna have all these buses and you're in a residential area.
Right.
Cause then you're dealing with the director butters and you run into issues, but this way makes more sense.
Is there a contingency plan for another place? Maybe not, you don't have to go into specifics, but do you have another place in mind in case there's not enough room for all the buses at that site to store the remainder of the buses?
There's open lands, um, on the, on one side of it, there's an, um, a vacant lot that's owned by another business there, um, and the city would then have to look into either trying to do a friendly taking or a hostile taking of that. That's, I think, another acre and a half to two acres.
Yes.
Um, so, that's the, that's the plan for going into the next, yeah, but it's a different owner, so.
Do we know how much space we require at the fairgrounds? Like, I know we're purchasing three point nine acres, but how much are we actually taking?
It's hard to say, because it's like, they're all spread out everywhere, so.
We originally calculated about four acres.
It's about four to five acres.
What we wanna do now is have the facilities there, the police vehicles, we wanna, we wanna bring a lot of our.
Okay.
So, the best case scenario is us, once we get this, we would then urge the city to.
Look at the vacant lot?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think that's plan B.
Cause then that would get us up over six acres.
Okay.
But you're right, Mr. Homer, that's, that's, that's the, that's the plan going for, for other, once this is secured. Do we need a motion, Aldo, or just allow?
Just, just an update.
Just an update.
An update, yeah, I don't think, yeah, cause they have, we want, I don't think we don't, we don't wanna take a vote, cause it's.
Go on to city council.
City council, I just vote.
And just let us know when you're going, so that at least maybe we can provide some support.
Oh, no, we'll come to you before, no, we'll actually do a updated presentation before it goes to them, just so you know exactly what. And then the mayor and the law office can come and actually do, we can present the details about the layout, but then they'll have to present the details about the legal things that they have to do before they do a friendly taking.
Right, once the other party signs the MOU.
Right.
We have an understanding, then we can bring it all out, I don't wanna bring too much out in public.
Yeah, until you.
Someone else coming along could say, if they don't take it, I got a better deal for you, or a much, more expensive deal for you, or, so.
Right.
Well, thank you, Aldo.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, um, number four is proposed trade school location.
So, this is an update on the building that some of us visited, which was the old, um, well, it's currently the Port of Chester Trade School in the old Staples, um, slash Pet Smart location, um, and it's, be a great opportunity for us. Um, and we'll have to look, it, it has gone off IRFP, um, and obviously that would be for, um, bid review to look into and go, go from, so, um, just, I wanted to talk to Cobb, just to give an update of where we are with that.
So, as Mike said, the, the proposed location is the, is the current, is still currently in, in service, the, uh, Port of Chester Institute. Um, the particular location, it's at six oh nine Belmont Street, across, directly across from the Burger King. Uh, with, um, the facility right now, it, it was, I, I thought it was actually older, but they, they finished the construction and put it into service in two thousand nineteen. So, it's, it's a brand-new, beautiful facility, it's really, it's turnkey, it's far over concerned, it's nothing to do but, you know, unlock the doors and set up the classrooms, um, it, it currently, it's, um, they, they are classrooms, laboratories for electricity, HVAC, automotive repair, dental assisting, nursing. The building, the total school, uh, footprint is thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-five square feet, um, on the seven point eight three acre lot, so there's ample parking and spaces, uh. Again, it, it's, like I said, it's, it's brand-new, it's, when I went to trade school back in a millen- a millennium ago, I would've died for electrical shop that they have, they have a commercial shop and they have a residential shop. It's two floors and it's, it's beautiful, I mean, it's, uh, it's, so, it, it's really, it, again, as far as facilities it's concerned, we don't have to do anything to remodel or demolish anything, it's just occupy it, basically, yeah. So, that's kind of the update, we're in the process of, um, again, the RFP process and negotiating with the owner. Um, they expect that the current tenant, the Port of Chester Institute, may be leaving within the next month or two. So, by February, they expect it to be available.
Dr. Cobb, have we, I think we talked about this when we were looking at the property, but have we taken a look at the population that would be able to attract back? And I know realistically, if there is, you know, and obviously I'm making this up, if there's, you know, eight hundred kids right now from the Brockton area, from the city of Brockton that are going to, say, Southeastern Regional or another vocational. And the juniors and seniors, I would carve out, because they, you know, they've already made relationships, they're not gonna wanna move. I don't know if, if we would attract anybody in their freshman and sophomore year, but do we have any idea of what the return on investment would be immediately and then over time?
Well, yeah, you know, probably Aldo and Mike can speak better to that, but like, we, when we looked at the property, you know, we, you're right, we currently have freshmen that are, that are attending what we call the SOAR program, which is a cooperative program between Southeastern and us, and we bus them over there in the afternoon. Basically, they're the ones that are on the waiting list to go to Southeastern, because we don't have the facilities that this, this would provide us to, to give them the classes that they need. Um, once we occupy this space, we, we have, you know, day and night classes we can have over there. So, that SOAR program can be right across the street, you know, if, if our students, you know, we can, we can take back more of the students, obviously, first, that are on the waiting list, or that are considering going to the trade school over there. Biggest shops that are most popular, the electrical shop, HVAC shop, and then, of course, the nursing and dental assisting, so, we could have that right here on campus, so, Aldo, what would you say? We could probably bring back two to three hundred of those students easily?
I would think we, we could absolutely bring them back, cause most of the students that leave still want our, our sports, our music, our drama programs, so they'd like to have that here. Um, the timing of this is such that with the way chapter seventy works, you count your students October one, you receive the money the next year. So, we'd really need an influx of cash for two years to cover the lease on the property and then the staff. So, um, you know, if there's grants we could apply for, or a, a funding source that would cover us, by the third year, we'll start seeing the chapter seventy coming in for those students. And chapter seventy for those students is higher than our regular students.
Yeah.
So, right now, we get sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars per student. My guess is you're in the low twenties, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand.
Southeastern, they're about twenty-one thousand dollars a student is their reimbursement.
That's what we receive back, so, I think at that point, we'd be running, um, you know, really well. So, um, we'd have to have a, a good lease, and we'd have to have, again, some influx. I mean, the Promise School was funded by the, by our foundation, I think they paid the first two years to get us going. So, if we had something like that, it'd be great, it'd be great.
The other thing is the most practical for the students themselves, you know, I, in my neighborhood, I see the Southeastern bus, you know, stop at the corner at like five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, because they have to run the city and then bring the kids over there, so. Those students are up really early in the dark, and, and they have to be bused over there, and then late in the evening, bused back, so. We, we're right here with our own transportation, so just like the regular high schools that we have now, it, it, the students can, can get up, you know, catch the bus at seven o'clock, and, and, or be in the same neighborhood in Walker Schools, so.
No, I think it's a great idea, I, I mean, I really do, and I love the fact that it's directly across the street from the high school. Like, you couldn't ask for a more perfect position, seriously.
I agree.
But does anybody have any questions? Mr. Homer?
Um, can you talk a little bit about what would this do to, um, any of the projects or any of the, the, um, MSBA proposals for any renovations here at the high school, where we have chapter seventy-four programs here at the high school? What would that do in terms of entering into agreement to lease new space if we're making proposals for renovations here in this building?
Well, interestingly enough, because with this, with this, the MSBA things they sent us, there's a whole new section on chapter seventy-four, and they're really, they're kind of taking over, I think, the chapter seventy-four from the Department of Education, so, this will be huge. They're kind of taking over, I think, the chapter seventy four from the Department of Education, so this will be huge for us, for the renovation and for the chapter seventy four program reimbursement. Because I think we moved like the electrical shop over, the HVAC shop and those things over to this this location. It allows us to go back and then renovate and remodel the concurrent shops and add add something else like plumbing, we don't we don't have plumbing right now, we could maybe put that in the high school.
Cosmetology, we don't have either, which is huge.
So we could take some of those spaces and reclaim those spaces and add more chapter seventy four program.
But that would be right, the the MSBA, this would be fully. Chapter seventy four programs in the current building would be fully renovated, so we could operate much better.
Yeah, the only thing I was worried about is like if 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 we have due dates and things for scheduled deliveries for things that we have to propose, is any of this proposed? Is anything, any language about moving shops out or anything like that? And would that jeopardize anything if we weren't able to move them out and does that mess up our plans or? Especially if we're laying out a million dollars or two million dollars to propose changes and then find out that we can't do it or anything and we don't get reimbursed.
I I don't think so, I think it's it's an extension of our chapter seventy four programs to put some over there and we'll still have them at the high school, you know.
Yeah, and it is more, this school is more to expand for Edison. Promise. Promise, Champion, to be able to then.
Okay.
Go there and take chapter seventy.
Vocational component.
Right, it's a whole vocational plan district wide.
All right.
For all the high schools as well, but it wouldn't affect anything that we wanted to do here.
Okay. Yeah, the only other comment I would have just made is just like, just I have concerns about staffing for a new facility and bringing in new teachers when we're already. You know, we started off in a difficult position finding staff here at the high school as well, so introducing even more programs and more staffing requirements for another school, just. You know, the kids, the interest in the kids is definitely going to be there, that's, and I see it at my job too, but. There's also, we're having a little bit of a problem with teachers and finding teachers to be in front of those classes, so that's a little bit of a concern.
So the idea, Jared, at first would be to, that's where the Promise School would move, so there's already staffed. You might would be, you know, hiring trade, obviously, you'd have to hire people for trades, but the academic teachers are already in place. Uh, and then as it expands, we can, with it being so close to the high school, we can also figure out. With the union, how we can share teachers between the high school and Promise, so and then also. Do after school programs for high school kids that that we don't have stuff here for at the high school, like, you know, the the electrical that they have there, the the. What, they have six lifts? The auto shop? Yeah, the auto shop had six lifts.
Six, six, eight.
So it would be basically, we would just move the current promise, so they would then, obviously, because where they are now won't. Be able, they're only have right now, they started with fifty students, then they're going to grow each year. And the the hope is if the Bar Foundation. Fully funds the promise and will know that this spring, they would hopefully pick up some of the cost of the leasing of this building. Because the the Bar Foundation has a big stake in making sure Promise succeeds and part of their budget has to include space. Because they're always big on, so it could be, this could be a good chance that a chunk of this is picked up by the Bar Foundation. Because that's how the Promise School's being funded. But then you would use it for, like, you'd rotate Edison kids in there at night. Champion kids could go there to take vocational classes during the day, so it'd be used for. A lot like the fifteen hundred kids that we have is nine to twelve students who don't go to Brockton High, and that wouldn't affect anything here up here. But again, I mean, we have to look at, bid review is going to have to look at the bid, and then obviously, the school committee would have to vote on. The full committee would have to vote on, but we also have to make sure, we have to talk to the mayor about the funding.
We get a lot of asks in this meeting.
Well, I mean, we we visited the building at the request of the mayor, so. We will see how much funding is there for us.
So I know we've spoken quite a few times, probably within the past two, three years, talking about expanding our vocational, I apologize. Our vocational program, so on average, like, how many students can that place hold? I mean, the place was pretty impressive, and I'll be honest, I wanted to go back and think, like, I want to take some of these programs and I wish they offered them for adults at night, just the basic programs.
It probably could fit up to eight hundred.
Yeah. So do we have a school similar to this that we can ask them on average how many students and? You know, if we offer it to our students, which is wonderful, but you have a lot of adults that want to go back and learn a trade, and if we can, you know, focus on that.
That would be done through community schools, the adult enrichment.
Right.
Which they could charge and, oh, absolutely, we could open it up through community schools at night or weekends to to do adult.
Just basic, change attire, you know, little little classes and.
Right, it's a good point.
So and the other thing is is.
End up being something we could make some money off of.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, I. Revenue generator.
Right.
I would take just basic safety, you know, um, so.
We probably could make it part of, and I'll have, I'll talk to Mustafa at the Adult Learning Center, there may be. Funding through the Adult Learning Center grant that may allowed us to.
It's not a very large grant.
Yeah, but they might be doing something with trades now in career, so that would be a good option for parents who are at. Adults who are at the Adult Learning Center learning English to be able to then also learn a trade at the same time, which would be. Something we could, I mean, everything we can do that we could we could apply for more grants that way, so it's a good option.
No, definitely, and then. It was pretty impressive, so the landlord owns, that's not the school's property, all like the electrical department and the heating and. The the dental chairs, like, that's that's all his.
Comes with everything.
Well, their property, okay, so it's not the school's, so they they cover all that, which is.
Yep.
Again, it's moving ready, but like Mr. Homer had mentioned, just making sure that. We can staff it, that's the thing.
A hundred percent, yeah, we know.
I was going to say, to Mr. Homer's point, even though Porter and Chester is moving out, they're not going away, they're just leaving this site. We might want to look at their instructors that they currently have there because they might be local.
And the and one thing about the vocational, the Department of Ed, because of the issues with. Find like people having to be certified.
Their approval process for instructors.
It's gotten a lot easier for somebody that's experienced, they're they're allowed to use a lot of their experience in the trades as part of getting certified.
Yep. Yep.
Because before it was like you had to go through the exact teacher, and then we couldn't find people anymore because.
I I actually just got my emergency certification to teach electrical shop, I've been a licensed electrician for years, and they just asked me for my electrical license.
Yeah, so they've become more.
Less strategic.
But again, you have to think of staffing because it's.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing about the staffing, particularly in the evening, to speak to Mr. Homer's question, is, you know, just like the teachers at Edison, they're they're contracted during the day and they teach at other facilities, but at night, it's a stipend. And it's a pretty set stipend, so we're able to attract teachers.
Yeah, a lot of the teachers.
Every semester, we're able to expand and extract based on the student population and enrollment.
The other thing is we should look into see if any of those programs currently right now are already approved through some government agencies for the adult learning, like. Training Pro, like, there's, you know, there's, the way they're set up by design, they're already in approved, they're already in an approval state if you are a dislocated worker or.
Right.
You know, that kind of thing, and so, not that we're looking to purchase their curriculum, but they might already be set up for that.
Exactly.
So. Mr. Rodriguez.
Few questions. This all falls through. How does that affect? The MSBA application, knowing that, you know, we're bringing these programs on board, are they going to actually come back, you know, to have it on campus? I mean, we actually want to own our property, are we going to add a whole new wing to the high school to include all these?
We don't know what they're they're proposing, once we get to the feasibility.
But we are going to push for an extra, another building to be added for STEM and advancement of vocational programs.
Or they could say, we're going to be going to make you build two schools, and one could be a vocational school and one could be a comprehensive high school, we we just don't know what the feasibility will flesh out.
Well, it'd be a two-year feasibility study that involves us.
That would be my ideal, I I want to see two schools, a voc school and a comprehensive high school and.
Yeah, they could come back, but but we're part of it, that we're fully a part of it.
Yeah, it's a part of the process.
But this leasing of this would have no effect on the MSBA.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but speaking of the feasibility study, that feasibility study, does it inclu, it includes everything like the conservation piece, correct?
Every, everything.
You know, interviewing neighbors, because I know we're going to have to interview neighbors of where.
And it involves a lot of stakeholders in the community.
Community meetings.
We have to have a lot of meetings within the community.
MSBA actually, it's cumbersome, but they actually do a very, their most thorough state agency that you'll ever come across.
Yeah, to vet this type of thing, yeah.
I mean, the way they make you follow timelines, the committees, they make you, I mean, that's why it's a seven-year process.
Well, a good example of that is this 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 compliance checklist, it's five pages of things to check off and certify, you know.
And I mean, also, you know, speaking on. You know, it's a phenomenal piece of property, I was blown away just walking in there saying, wow, this is right in Brockton. And, you know, also, you know, one of my questions was to, you know, have this offered to the community. To especially to our adults and immigrant, you know, predominantly community where they can gain a trade. And then also, I mean, this is like further conversation of of actually, you know, bringing in a lot of the stakeholders in this city. To provide some type of scholarships or build some type of scholarships to, so we can offer to the community, so this isn't just for.
Kids.
Our students, which is number one, it's our students, but also to the community as well, and also looking at, you know, other programs that, you know, trades that we can. Bring into, you know, even, you know, basic EMT training, trying to see if we can bring booster ambulance on board with having, you know, them occupy some space there, so.
Right, that places a ton of, and to Mr. Rodriguez's point is, I, you're looking why the. Port Chester is basically leaving because they cannot get students to go there, so they can't afford the payments anymore, they can't afford to stay in that building. But they can't get students because their prices are very high. And they don't, there's no scholarships and obviously, they have to pay people like we have, even. We would have a much cheaper option and still make a profit. They would have a much cheaper option for community members and we would still make a profit to be able to pay the expenses at the building. Right now, they have no people, hardly anybody over there because they can't afford to go there.
No, they can't, and it's a for-profit.
Right.
You know, so it's it's tough, especially in these trying times.
And we're not looking to make a profit, we're just looking to pay the expenses, which.
We're a nonprofit organization.
Right.
Sorry, just one last comment, so does the RFP say how many years we're looking to lease this property?
And that's usually fleshed out in the actual lease document itself, we just specify what we're looking for.
Usually it has to be between three and five, or just three.
Most of the ones we put out, say, three years with two more options to renew, so a total of five.
Okay.
But once you get to five, you got to go to city council for approval.
Because everything we've talked about says it'll take at least a couple of years to get the numbers up, like we did with the Promise and things like that. And then the other thing is, is. Like everyone else said, it's pretty impressive and we are losing our students to the vocational schools. But to be able to offer a vocational school and they're able to get involved in sports, music, drama, arts.
ROTC.
Yeah, ROTC, JROTC, so it's like we're, you're getting the best of both worlds, which is, you know, sometimes I'll get calls and parents, you know, have to. Move their child to a different school, but they also want to still take advantage of the music and the arts and the sports, and I'm like, we only offer that for Brockton Public Schools.
And they're in their neighborhoods, they're here in Brockton.
Yes, so this is, this is definitely, I think, what a lot of families have been looking for. And it's definitely a positive for the city of Brockton to have this. To be able to offer this, not just to our students, but if we could offer it to the adults. I know I was really impressed, we were all in awe when we walked through there, so pretty impressive.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's move on in the interest of time.
Because it's got to go to bid review and then it would come back to the committee. All right, so just my apologies because I have to leave in about ten minutes for another appointment at my daughter's school. But Keith Field, I got an update today, the mayor couldn't be with us tonight, but this is the update I got about the Keith Fields from Mike Morris, the city procurement officer. So the RFP, this, the latest RFP went out. It says a disposition of real property, which is a portion of the Keith Field, was reissued. That RFP was reissued on December point fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Proposals were due last Thursday, January nineteenth. There was a lot of interest and a number of plan holders that looked into this, but then only one proposal was received. The sole proposal was submitted by the Boys and Girls Club of Metro South. The purchase price proposed by the Boys and Girls Club is a hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five. The next step in the process is for the RFP review committee to begin their evaluation of this proposal.
That would be bid review, right?
That would be whoever, I don't, Aldo, how's the city, what's this RFP review? Is that a subcommittee of the? City council or what is that?
It's whatever the mayor put together for an RFP review committee, they're going to go through it and when you put out an RFP, there are many different sections of it. That you have to, you know, look, are they favorable, are they unfavorable, you go through and you kind of value the proposal, there's a scoring system in there. If you had many proposals, you would go through and say, out of the five people, this is the order of, this is the best one, this is the worst one. After you do that, then you open the price heft, and then you look at the price.
Say that again?
There's a separate price when you do an RFP, you don't open the price first, first you evaluate by who's the best fit for your project. After you sort them out, then you open the prices, and if the first one has a decent price, okay, you might go with it, but the first one has a very high price. You say, let's look at the second one and see what their price is, if that's more reasonable, you go with that, so that way, it's not low bid. It's whoever's going to best fit you, that's why it's a proposal, as proposed as proposed to a bid. So that's what they'll go through, they'll 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 review it, see how they met all the criteria, and if they have met all the criteria, they'll look at the price. And if they felt the price is reasonable, because usually they got the price in mind ahead of time, if it's reasonable, then they'll bring it forward and say.
Do we, and I don't know, this might actually be a question for you, Ms. Azak, because you're the expert in the room. No, but I I don't know why, and maybe it's just because I love Brockton, but I just feel like that land's worth more than a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, am I crazy? Have we done a, I'm just curious, have we done a appraisal, I I'm just curious? Or is this a case of, you know, it's worth whatever anybody's willing to pay for it?
From my research, what needs to be done, the, I'm not sure if the city even did this, I haven't seen any documents, is. That parcel land has to go through three different appraisals and they come up with the the figure for that. And a hundred and seventy-five is not the actual figure that that's deemed for that parcel of land.
But is is there more to it, do they buy the land, have to do something for the city, I don't know what the proposal is.
No, the basically was, once we gave the piece of property up, then they goes through their legal. And then they put the RFP out, that's they re put it out back out because, why they put it back out, somebody remind me?
It was a change of the the RFP, so.
Correct.
Once the they changed the RFP, it's null and void, so they had to change some languages and put it out back to bid.
Am I wrong in saying that the previous RFP, the Boys and Girls Club, are the only sole?
Both times.
Yeah.
And that might be because it's a land lock issue, maybe, is it? That they're butter to the property?
And then I think that they have to also. I think, doesn't the city then also have to see what they're, like, what they're proposing to do? Did that, was that have to come in the RFP?
That's why everything's in the RFP, we've, the Howard School, for example, that was put out for RFP, and the city would have let someone win that for a dollar. If they said they're going to develop it, clean it, and go through, and they would hire four hundred Brockton residents to work there, they could have it for a dollar. Someone could say, I'll buy it for a million dollars, and I'm going to put a warehouse there just for myself, so that's when the RFP, they go through and they say, well, what's the best for the city? Well, the four hundred jobs is probably outweighs the, you know, the one owner using it as his warehouse for. Well, the four hundred jobs is probably outweighs the, you know, the one owner using it as his warehouse for his plumbing supplies. So, um, again, that's the reason why you put the proposal out, so that's why I don't know for that hundred and seventy-four thousand, what are they proposing?
It looks like it's just the purchase price for the parcel of land. That, I, I mean, a, just saying, this is what it says here, from Michael Morris, the purchase price for the parcel proposed.
So, Mrs. Ayers, so the, the way that I read the RFP is, and I believe anything that happens with that land is, it's got specific requirements when it comes to, it's gonna be for the youth and, and what's done on that property is for the youth. Um, so someone can't just come in and, and put a building. So it's got, it's got specifics that whoever, you know, submits for the RFP, um, has to follow certain requirements because I believe it was spelled out, um, it's, it's gonna benefit the youth of the city.
Any other questions for me, because I have to run, I don't wanna, I'll leave. Yeah, we'll make another copy, I'm, I'm short, but, um, this is the copy of the email I got from Mike Morris. So, uh, I'll, I'll forward it as an email as well, because he sent it as an email today as an attachment, so, um.
So for the purposes of this, this is more of kind of like.
Just so you have it.
Make us aware of it, but it still has to go through the RFP review committee, correct, Aldo?
Yes.
The, my only question after reviewing the RFP, I didn't see any, um, actual meets and bounds, um, included in that. I mean, it's just an acre, so it's like they could say, just the acre right in the middle. So I, I just wanna make sure that that's actually in there, uh, northwesterly, eastly, southly, what, you know, what the actual lines are.
Then they should have given a parcel ID or something in there. If they did, then there is, that is all behind it. If they say parcel number one eight five, then it'll have all that with it, but I haven't seen it myself.
They did, they, um, I looked at it a little further, so they did reference a parcel ID, um, to be able to look that up.
Okay.
So I don't believe it was attached, I can go back and look. So they did reference it, but in Mr. Rodriguez, we, when we had spoken originally, I think when the facilities had gone over it, we had asked if they could just put the meets and bounds in there because it's forty-seven somewhat thousand square feet. So we just wanted to make sure that it wasn't altered because we need that field, um, for other use. So I, I believe that's why the committee at the time had mentioned that, and there was something else they mentioned, I don't remember.
We carved out that, that parcel land specifically, um, at the entrance at an angle to preserve, um, the, the Keith name with the, the pillars, with the eagle, all the pavings that has meaning. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that that's actually documented, um, that, you know, they don't think they have control over that.
Right.
Okay, any other questions in regards to the Keith Field update? Um, okay, moving on to item number six. Um, I believe Dr. Cobb's is gonna give us an update on the Rockland Trust Building at eight forty-six North Main Street in Brockton.
Certainly, so, um, I'm not sure, every, hopefully, but you know that right now, eight forty-six North Main Street is at the Rockland Trust Bank, where they, just at ATM there right now, next to the Wade Funeral Home. Um, we've been leasing that place now, what, two years, just, I think it's a second year, so. We notified them in September that we, the lease expires on April first and that we will not be renewing the lease. Right now, the location is currently used for the administrative offices for the, um, Brockton Virtual Learning Academy. Um, they, administrative office, principal, assistant principal, I think they have a counselor there now as well, so. Um, but with, like now, the, we have, like, I think, five teachers that belong to the BBLA and they're currently over at West Gate Drive on the first, on the second floor, uh, because they wanted to teach. Out of their house, home location, they wanted a place to teach, so we're housing them over there, so. The plan is, we'll, we'll, lease will expire on April first and we'll move the BBLA administrative offices over to the West Gate Drive, uh, location on the first floor. Because those, those, um, buildings are not being, they're being, people are relocating, moving out, so. There's a large space there that we can use to accommodate the whole school together, you know, at this point, and move the teachers down to the first floor, so.
And how much is that lease, that we're, on April first, what will we be saving?
That's eleven thousand dollars a year for the North Main, it's very cheap. Well, it was done that way, um, he, originally, um, if we did it over the eleven thousand, according to the state regs, we'd have to out the bid. And then, um, he could charge us a much higher rate. But he worked with us and decided to charge us just enough to stay under the state regs so that we could just lease it as is, um, and I, I, in my opinion, had a great discount because he wanted us in there, because he knew that, um, we would preserve his property, we wouldn't cause any problems with his funeral home, with traffic in and out, and the overall, you know, he, he knows that Brockton Public Schools takes very good care of the buildings inside and out, which we have, so he was favorable to us in doing that.
So question, if we just decided to sign a new lease, would we be able to get the, would we, would we be able to go into a new lease with the same eleven thousand per year? If we decided not, I'm just thinking, we've got a lot of projects coming up and this is a really cheap rent. Are we getting rid of something that we might need later on and then be kicking ourselves that we moved out of there? That's all.
Um, I don't know what, uh, if he'd be looking to raise the rent or not, um, or if he's got other ideas for it. But it's such a small space for what we're doing. The other spaces we're, we're leasing right now, six sixty-one Center Street and West Gate Mall.
Yep.
Are providing us with a lot of space, so.
Okay, I just, I'm, I don't think I've ever seen eleven thousand dollars a year for commercial space, and so stopped me in my tracks. Does it, Ms. Isaac, please?
Actually, um, just to follow up with Mrs. Ayers, I was thinking the same thing, I mean, eleven thousand dollars a year, it'd be good to leave it. If we could see if he is gonna raise the rent, rather than lose, we already have internet, we already have phones, we have everything already set up. We've already spent all the money to set it up for such small money for the, maybe the next year or two, or see if he is gonna go up in the rent or just, you know, keep working with us. It might not be a bad idea to just hold on to it as a backup location while we're transitioning so many different, um, parts of BPS. I was just, I was gonna comment the same thing, you don't see ten, eleven thousand dollars. Um, that's the only thing, rather than lose it and then it'll end up costing us fifty.
We're bringing up with the superintendent and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, it, we may be, you may be like, no, you guys are crazy, we don't need it, we've got plenty of space, and that's okay, do you know what I'm saying? But it's, but I just, you know, for the first time, when you hear that type of, that amount of money and what we already pay to be at certain places and the fact that it's available, I don't even know what it looks like, Aldo, I have no, you might be like, it's really small, it's, who knows, but just.
It really is small, it would be really outgrown, the space, like I said, we, we have the school in two different locations right now, and we'll bring them into one location. Might have been like a two-teller bank at one time. Yeah, it basically was, it two small offices, but the other thing is, you know, logistically speaking, you know, from the facility side, operation side is where the more locations we have to maintain, the more people we have to hire, we don't have staff, we don't have a full-time custodian there, we have travelers that go to that location, the promise school location, the West Gate location, and so to consolidate some of those operations in, into one, one place, it's much more beneficial and, and much more practical for us.
That actually does make a lot of sense, I didn't even think of that, but you're right.
And, and just, and honestly, it's, it's short money, but it, it's just issues there, it's, it's not worth the money.
Okay.
Operationally speaking, and logically speaking, it's just not worth it.
Are you just notifying us that we're not leasing or do you actually need approval to end the lease coming?
No, we're just, it's just information, it was.
It's information.
Okay, in the, in the interest of time, let's move on to number seven, which is also with Dr. Cobb's to update us on the building at two hundred West Gate Drive.
So I already kind of, uh, segwayed a little bit into this already, three sixty-five West Gate Drive, where, you know, we're in the process. The, 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 the plan with that building still is, it will be the pre-K school on this, on a second, the upper level, the second floor.
Is it two hundred or, you said three sixty-five?
Three sixty-five West Gate Drive, it's not two hundred.
So it's not two hundred?
Right.
Sorry.
Three sixty-five.
I just wanted to make sure.
It was a typo, they didn't take out of it. Yeah, so the, the plan will be, right now, we have the space on the second floor occupied because it's with, with people from the, you know, the bilingual program, the community liaisons, uh, some of the counselors, and then again, there are five teachers there that belong to the BBLA. So, come September, those people will all be on the first floor or someplace else, we'll consolidate them. And, and the top floor will be the pre-K, um, building that we need to open up for, because we have, you know, the, I believe it's a full, full school, full day pre-K.
Yes.
We can open up to, and the plan is to have at least like two hundred pre-K students there.
Pre-K starting at what age?
Five, five and a half, four, yeah, pre-K, so.
And when do we think that would be done?
We, we're planning to open in September, so the, the, the goal is like, so that's why the update now is we're, we're monitoring with the owner the other people that are moving out, and the real cog in the wheel right now is that the rehab clinic that's there, and they should be out by the middle of next month, is what I've been told, so. They have a new location, they're in the process of moving to the new location, so. So that, once we get to that point, we can enter, you know, a full, uh, lease for the entire building, uh, with, with the intent to purchase the building.
So we're leasing how much space right now?
Oh gee, what's the second? I have to take a look at it, it's, it's large, I mean.
How many classrooms? We got thirteen?
Yeah, yeah, so it, it was, it was, it used to be the old Lincoln Tech, uh, building, so the classroom's already set up, but, um, I, I don't have the full square footage off the top of my head, I can get it for you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, with the pre-K, I thought we were focusing on making the Huntington location as the full-time and then also coming up with the, another plan for the students that are currently there. And, you know, where are we trying to find a location, because, you know, I, I know I, I have a concern with putting that program at the West Gate Mall. And also putting pre-K at the West Gate Mall. Um, when I look at that property, you know, not having, you know, a gym per se, so we want to make sure that the kids have, you know, a pre-K to have a gym, not just trying to, you know, build out a room and say, this is a gym. Uh, so, you know, I just want, you know, where are we with the Huntington, um, being, you know, updated to grow our, you know, pre-K and kindergarten program versus saying that we're gonna have them, I mean, I know for temporary fixes, you know, we already have the space, let's utilize this now before, uh, we complete this project.
Okay, so, good question, there's a lot of questions there to unpack. Um, the, we, we've done extensive studies with an architect and to look at the Huntington to outfit it, rehab it, or we even looked at the Adult Learning Center to possibly make a shift, and at this point in time, it's prohibitively expensive to, to rehab either building to try to accommodate students. We'd have to put in full sprinkler systems, alarm systems, um, you would have to, it would cost us millions of dollars to try to rehab the Huntington to make it into a pre-K, uh, because of this, the size of the building, the configuration of the building, and, and it's old, we'd have to go through, like I said, sprinklers, we'd have to put in new doors, do, do floors, do, you know, ceilings, uh, and then we have the gym, of course, we even, you know, either, either one of those, you know, it, it could be a, a price tag of six million dollars to rehab the building to make it outfitted, because you have to bring the entire building up to code. Whereas the West Gate, the second floor on the West Gate, it, it's, it's already done, it's a school, it's sprinkled, it, it meets code right now, it's already code as a school, so we don't have to do any changes or anything to there, so. So that's why we're, we're back to kind of square one with these, the pre-K being at the West Gate Drive location. The promise school location will be, as we're talking about now, the Porter and Chester, uh, probably, so they will move out of the West Gate location. I mean, the, the, uh, fairground location, thank you, uh, and they will move over to the Porter and Chester building. And the, right now, the current occupants of the Huntington, the therapeutic school, will go to the promise, to the fairgrounds, to the fairground location. So that's kind of the, the current move pattern, you know, it's, it's based on the size and availability.
So we'll just have the Huntington sit vacant?
The Huntington, well, a lot of the people are now kind of squatting, if you will, at the Huntington, the office people, the bilingual people, the family liaisons, you know, they will go into the Huntington building, so we will just do kind of a quick in-house rehab, new carpets, new ceiling tiles and paint, and they can occupy the rooms, you know, that needed. So it'll be like a multi-use, almost like Cinesh Street, but it, it's multi-use office spaces and different, different department programs will be in there.
Now, piggyback question off that, so, um, when you say the sprinkler systems, I'm assuming that there's not a sprinkler system in there, or is it outdated?
No, there isn't.
So, even having staff in there, wouldn't that be a, a, a safety and security thing to add sprinkler systems in, into the, into the building?
Very, very expensive.
Threshold of, you know, occupancy numbers that we don't need it?
Well, the thing is, we're not really changing the occupancy, we're not, we're not doing any major, once you start doing any kind of major construction, then you have to bring it up to full building code, because the ones, once the price, the dollar threshold meets a certain percentage of what, you know, the building worth is, you have to completely bring it up to code, so. We don't have to do any of that, right, if we leave it as it is and just kind of again, clean it up and, and refresh it, basically. Um, you know, and bring, and it, it's mostly adult occupants that will be there.
How much square space is at the Huntington?
Oh, it's huge.
How much what?
Square space.
Oh, it's a lot, again, I don't have that off the top of my head, it's, it's a huge, it's like three buildings connected together, it just goes on and on and on.
Yeah, that's why I was like.
Building, so it gives us a lot of space and, and it also gives us, because the basement was being used as classrooms and, and, and of course, the cafeteria is there, but it lost, it gives us a lot of storage space too, for school supplies and paper and things that we have to store someplace, you know, like at the warehouse, so.
And how many, do we have an idea of how many, how big a population we'll be able to serve by putting all of pre-K up at three sixty-five? Like, how many students is that gonna have?
The plan is now between two and four hundred students, so about.
Between two and four hundred.
Twenty students per classroom, there's about twenty rooms we can convert into, you know, make classrooms.
Ms. Isaac?
It's okay, thank you, so, um, a couple of things. We just had the roof redone over at the Huntington, how does that fall as far as the MSBA? If it's not being used as an actual school, but more of as, as a location for admins and staff? Um, you know, what do we need to make sure that, you know, we, we follow what we're required to follow, that's one thing. And the other thing is, is there's no outside space over at West Gate. These are little kids, adults are different, but for, for young students, um.
There is some, you know, the plan will be, you know, that we have the students there, that we will, you know, put an outside structure, there, there's, there's an ample parking space that we can fence off and we can create an outside structure for them. Yeah, inside, right, there isn't a, a full gymnasium, if you will, but there's, there's a couple of large rooms that we can certainly use for activity spaces.
You know, for a temporary location, that's one thing. Um, I'm disappointed that we, we're not gonna be able to have them over at the Huntington, where the Huntington holds probably over five hundred students. I mean, you, we, we toured it and went up into the attic.
Right.
And that top floor was being used years ago, which is pretty impressive.
Yeah.
So that's a shame not to be able to use the whole school, that would have just been perfect.
You know, there may still be school programs there right now, we have the, the pathways program that, that's there, it may stay there in the building, and we have the, uh, the gifted to the gate, you know, program is for older students, you know, for, for therapeutic placement. So they will probably stay there in that, that facility as well.
And the Adult Learning Center area, that's not large enough?
Yeah, no, and, and we looked at moving and, and the, the, the principal, Mr. Mohammed, um, he felt that their location is, is, is the best place for them to be, they'd like to stay there, and, and that's where their, their students can get themselves there and their public transportation, and they're well-established there, and then we made some improvements there for them, so. He preferred to stay there with the school.
Okay.
I, Ms. Rodriguez?
I mean, I, I find it really concerning, um, the West Gate Mall location, I mean, for office space, for staff, that's okay, but like, moving students to the mall, I don't think that is a bright idea. Um, specifically our young children, and then also losing the Huntington, that's, that's in the community, that's in the neighborhood. To make it into just staff space, I mean, uh, six million dollars is not a waste, it's, it's an investment where we need classroom space. Um, so I think there should be like a, a deeper dive at looking at, you know, renovating the, the Huntington as we planned to make sure that we have a place for our kindergarten, because that location at the mall, you're right behind two motels, hotels that act as shelters. Um, there's a lot of activity that goes on up there, there's a lot of movement. I don't think West Gate Mall is the ideal location to put any type of schooling, specifically, you know, pre-K, kindergarten type of environment.
I just hate the fact that we have a full school that's not being really used as a school. I mean, it's just disappointing, and I understand where you're coming from, Dr. Cobb's, because the maintenance on those old schools is so high. I mean, it's just disappointing, and I understand where you're coming from, Dr. Cobb's, because the maintenance on those old schools is so high, but to Mr. Rodriguez's point, again, it's like if we were at Westgate and it was a temporary fix, you know, while we were renovating the Huntington, I'm just throwing that out there. That's something I could completely get behind, but at the same time, I'm just a little bit concerned that we have a full school that we're not, that we're about ready to look at utilizing for storage.
And I don't think we can though, with the MSBA, can we?
Uh, I'm not sure if I answered that question.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, cause we, we were able to redo the roof, but I believe we have to keep utilizing the school as a school, um, but if someone can look into that, um, that's the only thing, again, it's, you know, Huntington was, when I first came on the committee, you know, it needed all this work and then we were gonna grow a program there and then, then we were gonna do something else and now, so it's just, it's, it's a great school, it's a great location. If we don't do, I know if you do a certain percentage of renovations, you're required to bring everything up to code. If we were to just do the basics, um, to be able to just utilize it for, for any of the programs, you know, that's a huge school, you know, to be able to, all those classrooms and, and that's the only thing, is to be able to utilize it.
I don't know, then I battle with, to your point, Ms. Isaac, you're absolutely right, but then I battle with the fact that, do we wanna only go to a certain point, it's a school, like we should be putting the best, you know what I mean? We should be doing what we have to do to get that school so that it's up to code for any student to be in it. I think that's what's most disappointing for me, Mr. Homer?
So, I know, um, you mentioned this Pathways Program and then like Get You To The Gate Program, so there's currently a few programs that are looking to stay there too, um, are there different regulations for what the preschool standards have to be, I mean, obviously with like restroom facilities and stuff like that, I know bathroom codes are a little different for like the preschool areas and things versus the adult stuff, but, I'm just wondering like, is there, with, with the new preschool classrooms that we opened this year, the expanded preschool classrooms, have we, we've done some renovations to some existing classroom areas and bathroom areas in some of the schools. You know, is, do we need to look at doing anything with the Huntington in terms of, is that something we need to propose, you know, doing an exploration with as well, like with the state as well, if, if we're looking to bring in and expand pre-K throughout the city, and we're talking about two or three hundred, four hundred kids, but I know, is that an estimate of what like a full access for preschool for the whole city would be, approximately two to four hundred kids?
Right, that would, this, again, the Huntington is about five hundred student capacity, so it would be a school building dedicated to pre-K students.
Okay, yeah, cause I know that was, that was, uh, what we had talked about before was, um.
Like, basically like the Barrett Russell.
Yeah, how many, how many classrooms we would need total to accommodate that, and I think we had talked about if there was an opportunity to even offer pre-K services outside of Brockton as well, which would bring in, you know, we would receive money, I think, from sending school districts. But I don't know if that's something that in the long run would also help to, to offset renovations to that school and bringing that up to code.
You know, what I, I mean, I just kind of threw the number out there, six to eight million dollars, and we, we, we looked at the gymnasium to rehab that and it was already like three or four million dollars before we did the rest of the school, so it's, it, it could be, it's much more extensive, you know, rehabilitation for that building. You know, than you, you, cause you have to, you almost got a lot of classrooms and started from scratch and it's a lot of work and, and, um, possibly remediation, so we, we, you just don't know.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Now, with the total renovations, um, I'm assuming majority of those renovations will be done in-house, correct, or do we have to put some?
For the Huntington?
For the Huntington?
Or be contracted out?
Everything will be contracted out, there's, so there's nothing that we can do in-house?
Because of the extensive renovation, yes. Demolition, renovation, we just don't, we don't have the staff to do that, and, and, and if you wanna look at the timeframe to turn it around, even with, you know, contracted out, you know, go out to bid and contract out, it's probably at least a two-year process.
What if we sold it?
Well, that, that, to Joyce's point, that, you know, with the MSBA, you know, they just spent almost two million dollars for a roof, that, that could be a problem.
Yeah, Ms. Isaac, so it is up to code, it's just when you start doing renovations and there is a certain percentage, then you have to follow the new, new, um, code guidelines, so, the requirements, but I mean, it is, just those that are watching, it is up to code, um. But, cause I know at one point we had spoken about, you know, when we alter a school to accommodate the younger students, cause I know I've gone into the Barrett Russell, I mean, they're tiny sinks, they're tiny little toilets, rather than do that, you know, get the lifts, you know, where they can walk up on a little platform and do things like that. It's just such a huge school not to be able to use it, um, and then
I don't disagree, but.
What about the, um, the Goddard, would that have any potential, the Goddard?
Um, well, right now that's being used as a community center, but, you know, and again, that one has issues because it doesn't have an elevator, it doesn't have a lift, um, it's, it's much smaller, you know, the, the, the square footage and usage for that, it's just much, much smaller.
Cause I know when we met with our school committee, we, we were focusing on growing the pre-K program and to just grow it at a temporary location, to me is just like we're spinning our wheels, I'd rather have a location that this is where it's gonna be and we're gonna just grow it, and this is, you know, a lot of parents, um, a lot of families need the pre-K, they need, they need the help. You know, it makes more sense to have your students in the pre-K program than to have them in daycare where they're actually learning, um, and they can just easily go right into kindergarten and, and be comfortable and already familiar with our, our programs. I just wish we had a location, that's the only thing, but I would definitely, if you can let us know, um, as far as the MSBA, because they only give us a certain amount of time, we can't keep this, we can't keep a, a school closed for more than a certain period of time if they've given us money for repairs, and I know that was one of the issues with North at the time when we were talking about renovations. And then with Huntington, you know, is there a fine print that says it has to be a school? Cause it's fine right now, it's being used as a school now.
It will still be a school, but it, cause you have the other programs that are there, the Pathways Programs and the Get You To The Gate Program, so there's still students, there'll still be a school.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any limitations on what percentage it has to be used for school, students, if you will, but it will still be a school.
Okay.
Is there, and I'm really stretching on this, is, you know, when I said, can we sell it? Is there another piece of prop, because the Huntington is so big, is there another piece of property we could consider selling and then consolidate? Like you were talking about the Goddard School, I'm like, I don't know, I'm like, I just keep hearing about all these properties that we own, and so is there a better way to consolidate, because I just feel like the Huntington School is just, it's, it's like an icon in Brockton, like everybody knows the Huntington, and so I hate the fact that it's not how I pictured the Huntington when I was a kid, but, you know, that's me, but I'm just, is there, is there something else, can we borrow from Peter to pay Paul to try to make that work?
Well, that's, you know, that's a decision between yourselves and the superintendent, you know, I'm just kinda, I'm the messenger, more or less.
Fair enough.
And, and, you know, believe me, we, we have had discussions, myself and, and Sharon Waldor, the other deputy with, with Mike, about programs, you know, where even though our enrollment is shrinking, uh, programmatically we're growing, we, we, we adding all these different programs and we have to house them someplace, and that's my job to figure out, find logistics and find a place and, and make sure that it, it's compatible for what the programs will be, so. And we've changed, I don't know how many times we've changed on paper, we're just thinking, okay, now we'll put the Huntington here, now we'll put the, you know, we'll do this, we'll do that, and then then we go and we, I, we, I work with the, you know, the architect and we go and do the feasibility and look at the costs and it's like, okay, um, and, and then we worked with the Adult Learning Center and in the end they didn't wanna move, so it really kind of pushes us back to, okay, what's the bottom line here? We need to expand the pre-K, that's the goal, and we have to do it someplace right now.
I would like to talk about this more, so I'd like to add it as an agenda item to our next meeting, but Mr. Rodriguez?
No, I was, I just wanted to voice that, um, you know, we are the governing body of the school district, four out of the three that are here, um, out of the seven. If we have to, you know, find the money where to invest six million dollars to make sure this is a pre-K, I'm a hundred and ten percent, um, to look at that, I mean, if we have to go to our counterparts on the aisle in the city council to, to ask for these funds and request it through the mayor, I think that this body should move forward in that direction, cause we just can't just leave that, you know, to office space and storage space. You know, we've already had this discussion of growing our pre-K and that was gonna be the location, I, I know things change and money, we have to look at our finances, but, you know, but I think that, you know, we have to do everything, um, I know I'm gonna lobby for it, to, to make sure that this location stays as our, as we discussed, you know, prior to making this, uh, location, uh, for the pre-K program, it's, it's right in the neighborhood, uh, Westgate Mall is not in the neighborhood, so that's where I stand on this.
Ms. Isaac?
Sorry, one last comment, so, I know I've mentioned it before, so I'm a believer in investing or purchasing rather than leasing. To me, leasing, and I do this with my own clients, you, you're given money, you have nothing at the end. Whereas if we do invest it, so I'm not sure how much, I, I, offhand, I'm not, I don't remember how much we're paying for, say, Westgate or another location, but over time, we're gonna end up paying that six million or seven million or eight million. Um, it adds up over the years, whereas if we're able to get a, get something from the city or be able to work, um, I, I don't know if there's bonds or anything that can help us, or, I don't
That's the city.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but it, it's still less expensive to take that route where it's over time, you know, that, that's the only thing. We definitely don't wanna keep outgrowing our locations where we're going. And that's key, and I find like no sooner do we get somewhere, we outgrew this, now we have to move, and I just look at, we, we just spent all this money to get set up over here, now we have to go over here, now we have to go over here. That's a huge location, it has the yard, it has what it needs, it needs a little, little bit of updating inside.
Well, a little bit.
Well, but it's got, it's got the size, it's got the size and we can grow that program, and I'm sure that program's gonna get up there probably more than four hundred, um, once word gets out, because it just makes more sense for a lot of families, especially the costs of, of childcare, you know, um, on a weekly basis. People are paying seven hundred dollars for, for, you know, childcare, so, again, pre-K, they're learning and they're, you know, so it's not just, you know, your childcare, your, your, the, the children are benefiting from this, but that's my only, my opinion, is I'd rather invest it in one of our buildings rather than just keep renting.
Yeah.
Because when we first started here, we didn't have any money when I started on the committee, so I, I keep thinking, we didn't have any money. We have to think long-term, and if we can afford these, once, you know, the SOA and all those, the funds run out, what do we do? That's the only thing, so, and I don't wanna be pink slipping or blue slipping anybody in, in a couple of years, I, we've gone through that, so we need to make like really good decisions. But thank you.
Mr. Homer?
So, I know, just thinking out loud before we, um, move beyond this and take this off our minds, I'm just thinking too, I know we talk about the space and the amount of classroom, um, accommodations that you'd have in a, in a school like the Huntington or, you know, uh, some of the other locations, even when we mentioned like Barrett Russell. I think the other thing to consider too is the appropriate use of the space based on the students too, so you're not talking about little legs trying to go up three flights of stairs to the second floor for preschools in schools where they're not gonna have elevators, you're talking about fire alarms and fire drills and things like that, evacuation plans. We should look at, we, I think it's a, it's a great idea to continue the discussion of using that space, and I think we do have some schools in our district that are perfectly accommodating for single-story and entry and exit, uh, with classroom space, if you're talking about expanding pre-K, there's probably really good locations where we could do that. I know some of the existing classroom spaces, you're still seeing little legs going up and downstairs, and I know that, that's, that makes a trip from cafeteria to classroom takes a little longer, um, but, um, yeah, just in terms of just thinking about appropriate use of space, I just, I think that's a good idea to continue that. To continue thinking about this and how we could best use what we have and which populations are placed in which locations too, I, I, I guess the second, second floor at Westgate that you were talking about, um, I know that building has like a slope to that property, there's a second floor entrance in and out from that, and I know there's a lower entrances, am I correct on that, that there's a second floor access walkout?
They're, they're separate, inside the building, there's no stairway in between the two, so the second floor, when you get there, it's one level.
Up in the back, right?
Yeah, up in the back, so the parents can drop students off, you know, pick them up and, and when you're inside, it's one, one level, you're right.
All right, so it's not an absolute like nightmare of like trying to get up and down the second floor, okay, but just thinking out loud, thank you.
No, no, that's actually a really good point about the Huntington, cause you forget about the little legs and, you know, I didn't, I didn't even think of that. Yeah, no, Mr. Homer, that's actually a really good point, and thank you, Ms. Isaac, for clarifying that, um, you know, the, the building is up to code, it's just that when you do renovations to a certain extent, you then, you then have to be to new code, and so I wanted to thank you for the clarification, and did you have something else?
Yeah, one last comment, actually, I just thought of it when Mr. Homer, um, made his comment. One of the biggest issues we all get calls on is traffic at pickup and drop-off. Is that equipped, that little area, we gonna have issues with some of the tenants, the amount of cars going in there to pick up the, the students, dropping off and picking up, the amount of traffic we're gonna add to that little tiny, it's a small plaza and, and you go up to the second floor, cause you go up on the ramp, but you have to turn around and come back down.
Yeah, you can, you can turn around, that, that property, most of the parking lot belongs to that property.
So that's the only thing is, is far as, you know, traffic and safety?
That's gonna be anywhere you go, even at the Huntington, if you see the afternoon or the morning with the, with the small population there, the buses and, and the traffic in and out.
I mean, those were on the streets, here we're, we're in a plaza at a mall.
So it's not on the main street, it's not blocking traffic, it's not blocking, the school bus is stopping, it's, it's off the main street and, and it's up, out of the way.
Yeah, we just don't wanna run into any issues with any of the tenants, um, that's the only thing. Just having issues with the tenants, the amount of traffic going, I mean, it might be great, great advertising for them, it brings more visibility to their businesses, but just getting the traffic in and out of there, that's another concern as well.
Well, you, you live in Brockton, you go, you go by any school in the morning when the, when the buses are going in? You know, if the students are going in or in the afternoon when they're coming out, you got nowhere to go, you know, at least this is off of the path and out of the main street, you know, the flow of traffic, and, and the buses can come back in and, and into the flow of traffic, so.
So we would offer as much busing as we, we could for the, for the younger students.
Absolutely, yeah.
Try to try to, um, take away from the traffic, just so it doesn't get congested.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to number eight, which is other business, does anybody have any other business for this committee, Ms. Isaac?
So, we have two new members on the committee, so Mr. Rodriguez and I were on the committee before, and so we had some unfinished, we, we had requested it, I spoke to Dr. Cobb's. Um, so if we can get a copy of the application for facilities and a copy of any of the paperwork that anyone would need to look at or complete in order to, um, rent out any of our facilities, um, you know, it's time that we review it, we update it to this day and age, um, and, and try to add specific wording to really protect ourselves as well, I know, for example, we had talked in, in a different subcommittee about safety and, and having metal detectors at some events and things like that, so maybe it's time for us to just review them. So I know we had requested, um, at one of the past meetings and we just, it never, we never reviewed it. So if we can just have those, just to review, update them, and it's more sort of really to protect us, and then a lot of our fees and stuff haven't been updated in so long, or with the cost of heat and electricity and things like that, we really need to make sure we're not losing money by renting out, you know, for small money. We're not here in the business to make money, but, you know, offer the, offer the facilities for the, those that wanna rent them, but also we don't wanna lose money either, and it's been some time since we looked at those numbers.
I'll thin it out till you get in, you want me to send it to just the subcommittee or to the committee as a whole?
Well, just really the subcommittee, cause I think we're gonna vote on it, but if we can just have it in our packets, cause I know it's a sizable
Included in their paper package?
Sure, cause we, whether it's
Yeah.
For our next meeting or something?
A paper package?
Yeah.
I'll email it to you anyway, but we'll get, get a copy in your paper.
Yeah, no rush on it, just so we have time, just so, um, uh, the new chair and then Mr. Homer, um, have a chance so we can review it and, and get working on that, cause I know that was one of the things we want to work on at the last, last year.
No problem.
Yeah, sounds great, any other business that we wanna talk about? Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, two things, can you just give me an update on the Goddard, um, who's actually using it, I mean, is there, uh, I know we don't sublease, I mean, are they paying on rental, and then also, I, if I'm not mistaken, I could have sworn that we've, um, that we did approve for Uh, I believe it was a lift or some type of elevator, did that get installed or is that on hold or what's going on there?
No, it's not on hold, it, it's, it's scheduled to be installed by the end of next month. Because, you know, it, we, it's been contracted out, we did the RFP, it's been contracted out, uh, for the lift there. So we have to do some demolition and, and install the unit and then do, you know, do some, uh, to put it in, but. Um, so it's, it's scheduled to be installed, I think by the end of next month, cuz obviously we had to wait for the materials to come in, you know, supply chain issues. You keep hearing that nauseam, but you know, it pretty much affects everything that we do. So the lift will be installed, not an elevator, a lift, um. The building is being used right now as a community center and that's kind of up through the mayor's office and, and the superintendent. Um, Sabora is one of the major, um, kind of activities that are there and, um. I think C Plan with, with Nancy and, and Eva Lee, they, they're kinda working out that space. So as to my knowledge, I do not believe they're, they're, they're paying any rent to use the facility.
But that property is controlled by the school department?
It's still a school building.
So, okay, and also, um, I know this was, uh, myself and Kathy, we were on, on bid. And, um, I, I know we, we tabled the modular classrooms. Um, so it's gonna come back to the facilities. I know I had requested to get an update on what the actual cost figure would be. To actually construct an addition into what codes that needed to be upgraded if we did that. Versus just doing the, uh, the modular classrooms, I believe there was twelve. Is it twelve, if I'm not mistaken, modular classrooms up to that number that we had to. But, um, I would like, you know, for that to come back to this facilities of, you know, what the actual cost would be to put a structural addition. And what the codes that we would have to upgrade to.
It's the same, you, the modular classrooms, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. The modular classrooms, we ended up, after, before COVID, we were looking at modular classroom of six, four to six units. About what, seven, seven hundred thousand dollars, by the end of the, middle of the COVID, they were two and a half million dollars. So they just got, and, and the lead time was like, you know, they, basically they kept lying to us and, and extending out and extending out. So if we wanted to buy a modular classroom setup for a building now, it's probably gonna cost us three to three and a half million dollars. For like six classrooms and it's probably gonna take us a year to get, to get back the unit in place. And that's kinda the last, we left off, it's kinda, we just, we just, superintendent, we looked at it and just forget it. And, and so if you kinda transpose that number to between, say, a million and a half to two to three million dollars. To, to make an addition that's comparable to the size of those classrooms, then you're gonna hit that number again. Where you're gonna have to bring the building up to code and sprinkler systems and, and, and those kinda things. It triggers that, you're definitely gonna trigger that number no matter where you put them. As, as modular units, you don't, you know, you just connect them to the building, they're not connected to the building, you're connecting through utilities. But if, if you wanna build it, um, it's a different ballgame, it goes out to the RFP process and bids and then, then you, you. You're gonna end up, like I said, bringing the, the rest of the building, like, and getting to use Joyce, Joyce's, thank you for that, you know, that delineation. The buildings are up to code right now at, at school, did they meet the code that they, when they was built and when we added on. It'll be the new building codes that, that are much higher, uh, recommend, you know, requirements. And the main one is, is sprinkler system, to retrofit a building for a sprinkler system is an enormous cost and, and, and time consuming. Sprinkler systems and fire alarm systems and smoke detectors and most of the buildings don't have smoke detectors.
I know you probably won't have this on the topic, can you just provide like far as, I mean, we are up to code, obviously there's kids there, but I'm just saying like, you know. How many school buildings do we have that need the upgrade in our sprinkler system?
Probably except for probably the newer ones that were built in the nineties, the Baker, the, the George, the Arno and the Angelo. Those are equipped with the other, all the other ones pretty much, including the high school, including this building. And we, we priced out, I think, one of the buildings and this is an old price, I've seen a lot of the documents, um. To retrofit one building for smoke detectors and the current updated fire alarm system was about half a million dollars. Sprinkler system is probably like two and a half million dollars for, for the building. You start to, you hit those numbers pretty quickly where you have to upgrade everything.
Well, ten years ago, um, to do a new fire alarm system at West Junior High School. It was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by, um, it was a big company that does them all, can't think of their name. We ended up having our own electrician, he was able to do it and it cost us about sixty thousand, but he, his labor was our cost. There were all the materials, but it's very expensive to, um, to upgrade the fire alarm along with the sprinkler.
And time consuming, you know, it's, it's not something they can do, cuz we, especially, most of our work, you know, people think that. When the, when the school ends in the summer, that everything kinda relaxes, you know, that week, for us, we have two months to do everything, basically, whatever. And, and you're looking at doing a sprinkler system and, you know, in the, in two months in the summer or doing in the evening, if you're contracted out. Which is, you know, you, you run into the prevailing wage rates as well as the, the premium prevailing wage for evening and weekend work, so.
Always has those materials drilling through walls.
Drilling through walls and dust and, and, yeah, exactly, so it, um, you can't really do it during the daytime with schools in session.
Um, last question, uh, um, being down in Central, um, walking. Third floor, second floor, um, I know we need a new roof and it falls under the, um. Historical society, but you know, far as the inside, I mean, I've gotten complaints, I'm not sure if anybody else is. You know, the state of our central office where that's the heartbeat of the school district. Um, is, we have more staff that work at the school department than City Hall. Um, where are we with the renovations, because I mean, from the ceiling to the walls, the floors.
Actually working, the second floor, it just, it, a lot of it, it's been, we're repairing it again and plastering, um. But again, you're kinda, kinda plugging the holes in the night, cuz we, you're right, we need a new roof. Um, and I actually, when we, when we were working on the Huntington School roof, I was working with the project manager there just to get some numbers and, and idea. You know, we need roof and we need windows for that building, you know, the, the windows are like guillotines, you can't open some of them, you can't see, they just, the top falls down and, um. But again, cuz it's a historical building on historical register, I'm not why, sure why that was done, but it is, I went and looked and it's, it's in fact, it is on historical register. Like, right after we, we bought the building for a dollar, I think the same month, it was, it was put in for an application for historical building. I don't know why, but, but it causes a delay and, you know, we have to, you can't just replace the roof like we did at the Huntington. We, we could choose whatever we wanted to put in the Huntington roof, on this one, it has to be, you know, characteristically similar and, and you can't really change the look. We can't, we can't put a copper roof on that building because you have a slate roof, so it has to kinda look the same color more or less, like we did at the Huntington building, so. It's the same with the windows, they have, you know, whatever the, the configuration and the, you know, the style of the window, it has to be similar. So, and it has to be approved by the historical commission, which was the time when I was doing my research, we did not have a historical commission. Cuz in fact, for the Huntington building, we had to get a sign off by the historical commission. And they, we didn't have one in Brockton, so it had to go to the state historical commission and they. And when they say historical, in the context of like historical, they don't use email, they don't use technology. You can't call them on the telephone, you actually have to send them a letter and wait for them to send you a letter back in the mail, I mean, it's, it's bizarre, you know, but that's. That's, so it's a long process.
Have, have we looked at a top to bottom cost of look what the roof is gonna cost?
Well, we're actually meeting, we, myself and the mayor and, and Aldo and Troy and Ken, we're actually, Mike is kinda pretty much fed up. And he, he's set up a meeting with, you know, with the powers that be to kind of like, okay, what are we gonna do with this doggone building? Cuz it, it's, 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 you're right, it's, it's disgusting in a lot of ways, but, so that is set up next week, I believe it is. Alright, thank you.
And Ms. Isaac?
Sorry, actually, I'm not even sure if it's the right subcommittee, but I'm just curious, someone sent me an article, um, with regards to a school. And lights on it all the time and everything, Mr. Petronio, I'm just curious, like with, with the, the cost of electricity going up. What have we started doing at, at a lot of our schools, cuz I mean, sometimes you, everyone sees them, the lights are on late at night and a lot of rooms are on. So, um, I didn't know if there was a reason, I know there's certain areas, but some schools are lit up like a Christmas tree and it's just.
I can address that because we have night custodians that work until ten thirty.
Yeah, no, definitely, we've seen them, yeah, we've seen them, but it's just like the whole, you know, again, if it's, have we taken any measures to just try to cut on costs? I'm sure our electric bills are up like the rest of us.
Yes, we, we have, um, a few years back, we took it where IT would have the computers automatically shut down at a certain time at night.
That's what I thought, okay.
Screen savers set up so the screens go black, um, some of the classrooms have the motion detectors in it that shut off the lights when no one's in there. Um, so we've made a lot of those changes, so, and electricity is a concern this year, I've already mentioned to the city that. There's a chance I'll be coming before them, asking them for more money for electricity, because this was not anticipated, third, you know, thirty percent increase, electrical costs.
So I vaguely remember you mentioning to that, uh, mentioning to us about that, um, years ago, but I just, cuz I know you, you're, you're awesome. You always budget ahead and, and you always, you know, are always, yeah, you always factor in things that are gonna happen. But I don't think any of us factored in the electricity and, and I don't even, the cost of everything, I mean, it just.
We don't have, but we have gas.
Yeah, we have gas, but I'm just curious, like Downey's all electricity, the heat and the.
We actually have, you know, we have a project approved to upgrade, you know, the, the heating A T S E system. And we're working on a energy grant now, which will submit, the concept paper will submit Thursday. And we had our, we had received a package, we work with MRSCO, we, we had a package put together for a complete building rehab, if you will. For energy conservation, to put in, change light fixtures, change the transformers so the energy conserving, put in motion sensors. Change the energy conservation, um, you know, control system for the building. So that, that will be done and we're looking to do that also at the Barrett Russell, so, you know, we're looking at, you know. Retrofitted some of the buildings and putting in the sensors and putting in the new, like, you know, energy saving light fixtures and, you know, there's. People don't realize there's transformers all over the building that, you know, you, you, sometimes you can hear them hum. We'll change those out to new energy efficient ones, so, so we're working on each building at a time and trying to find grant money to do those kinda things. And so there, it's in progress, you know, each building will eventually be retrofitted with energy saving measures.
I know when I first came on the committee, I kept saying to Mr. Petronio, why can't we just have solar panels on some of our schools? But I mean, this is years later and I'm sure the panels are a lot smaller, they're a lot lighter.
Downey will have solar panels, if, if this new, this next grant is, is, it goes to and granted, it will have solar panels on there.
So I know we've.
It's an all-electric building.
Yeah, and we've come a long way, so I'm just curious to see if now they offer something where it was fairly newer when we first, um, and I remember. Mayor Carpenter, at one point when he was in office, we, we had discussed potentially having the solar panels. In the parking lot at the high school, um, and it was gonna be on the idea of like Stone Hills parking lot area with the solar panels. Um, and something came up and I don't know why we didn't move forward with that.
That may be in the, in the feasibility package with the MSBA, that we certainly might look at some of those things.
I mean, it just makes more sense and it's, it adds extra coverage, so, you know.
You can put them on the roof, I mean, there's, there's a ton of roof space at the, at the high school, cuz we really can't give up the parking spaces, but we could certainly.
And that'll help us, definitely, cuz our electric bills are high, so I was thinking of that the other day, thinking. Our like, our residential bills are high, can't imagine what the schools are, um, gonna be, so budget season's coming up, so.
Oh, I know.
I'm sure we're gonna see those numbers.
The good thing is, you know, with, with, with all these increasing energy prices, there's, there's, you know, with this new infrastructure bill that have been passed through Congress. There's a lot of money, that's a lot of grant money we have to jump through hoops to get, but there's a lot of money to energy saving measures. So we're, we're taking advantage of, we're meeting weekly with this grant and that grant and this one and, uh, so, so.
You guys are always on top of things.
Total grant money for, for the Downey of about seven and a half million dollars. So we've already got half of it approved, we have half of it in the bank, if you will, already, we, we can start to draw down some of that money already.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Alright, with no further questions for this committee, may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded, those in favor? Motion carries.